Jared, would you open up the lobby, please?
Uh, yeah, I will here in a second. I'm having some issues loading the participant list.
Alright, thank you.
Alright, a minute.
Jared, how you doing with your?
It's open now. Uh, if you're on phone, please use star six to mute. And if you're on your client, please mute that as well.
If any people are on the phone, please use star six to mute the phone so we don't get the feedback, please. I apologize for, uh, the lateness of starting the meeting, but we had a lengthy session that Mr. DeLuca will report on when we get to the voting session. Uh, tonight, though, we're gonna begin with the call to order on the public hearing. And with the pledge allegiance, ask everybody to stand where they're located and just pay the pledge allegiance, please. A pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the flag.
The United States.
America.
America.
And to the republic.
To the republic.
For which it stands.
One nation under God.
Under God.
Indivisible.
Clear to be seen.
For all.
Justice for all.
Moment of silence, please. Roll call, please.
Mr. Griffith?
Here.
Mr. Griffith?
Here.
Mr. Haug?
Here.
Ms. Howes?
Here.
Mr. Durbin?
Present.
Mr. Perry?
Here.
Radel?
Here.
Ms. Edman?
Here.
Mr. Schnee?
Present.
Mr. Urban?
Here.
Mr. Vog?
Here.
Mr. McGinley?
Present.
All present.
Thank you. The motion to suspend the bylaws regarding requirement, a majority of those participating in the meeting must be physically present at the meeting. Ms. Haug, do you make that motion?
So moved.
Do we have a second for Ms. Haug?
Second, Kendra.
Ms. Radel, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Any abstentions? None heard? Motion carries. Moving down to the second motion, motion to suspend bylaws regarding the conduct of public meetings to the extent that the current format is inconsistent with the terms of the state's emergency declaration. Do we have a motion?
Present it.
Uh. Who's that?
Sheila.
Oh, Sageman, thank you.
Yes.
Do we have a second for Ms. Sageman?
Second, Chris.
Chris Perry? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition?
No, Walter.
Mr. Griffith, any abstentions? Okay, none heard. Abstentions, the motion does carry. Uh, tonight, we will meeting to accept public comment on the proposed ordinance adopting the Luzerne County zoning ordinance of 2021 and the Luzerne County zoning map of 2021. Podium is now open for public comment.
Mr. Chairman, this is Mark Raybo speaking.
Go ahead, Mr. Raybo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to ask one question regarding the municipalities that the county serves under the zoning. Uh, did all of them or most of them, uh, give their input regarding this, uh, the changes in the zoning ordinance, if there's any, or any of the fees, uh, that are in also the zoning map? That's my only question.
Okay. Mr. Jones? You have to unmute yourself, Mr. Jones.
Good evening, counsel. Can you hear me?
We can hear you. Go ahead.
Um. We, uh. We, um, held, uh, several meetings of the Volunteer Planning Commission and, uh, over the course of the last two years. And, um. I'll ask, uh, Mr. Weber if he's on the telephone, if he can, uh, talk to the, um, extent to which we might have reached out to some of the municipal leaders to make them aware of the process, but this has been a, uh, a work in progress for two years. We have held, uh, several, uh, public planning commission meetings that were advertised, well, not advertised, but they were posted in advance on the county website. And, um, it's the, it's the product of those public meetings.
Okay.
To the extent that, uh, I can talk about the fee schedule.
The fee schedule is not part of this, the fee schedule is not part of this public hearing. The fee schedule is a resolution and not an ordinance. So I have a chance. Mr. Weber, do you have any comment?
Uh, if I may, um, there were no formal discussions directly with, uh, municipalities involved. They were aware of it via the, the same, uh, advertising, uh, over the course of actually closer to three years.
Okay.
Um, plus the, the official public hearings, uh, both at planning commission level and now this one, uh, tonight with council. Um, but there were no, uh, direct, uh, meetings.
Okay. Other members of the public?
I could just add that, I could just add that, you know, uh, there are certain municipal leaders like, uh, Joe Hillen, for example, in Newport Township who were involved in discussions about how this might impact Newport Township. And, uh, he has expressed his support for passage of the ordinance.
Okay. I think we're gonna let it.
Then, regarding, uh, the question about the maps, the only change to the maps were the abbreviations to, uh, make them more natural, uh, in the new ordinance versus the old ordinance. The map boundaries did not change at all.
Okay.
And neither did the fee schedule.
Okay. Other members of the public?
Mr. Manta.
Go ahead, Ms. Manta.
I'd, I'd like to direct this question to Mr. Jones and ask him, how many municipalities out of all the municipalities in Luzerne County are participating?
And then? That's your only question?
No, that's one question.
Okay, go ahead with your questions, please.
Okay, so the second question is, did they all acknowledge in writing that they wanted to join this quorum or whatever it is that they're gonna do? And the third question is that were, were they automatically put into this thing without their knowledge of, 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 uh, joining it by attrition or by, yeah, they were in there last year, so we're gonna put them in again anyway? That's the three questions I have. Thank you very much.
Mr. Jones?
Yes, uh.
How many municipalities?
Of the county's 76 municipalities, 21 of them have not passed their own home rule zoning ordinance. The county zoning ordinance has been in effect since 1968. It serves as the blanket zoning ordinance for those communities that have not enacted their own. And we have been administering their zoning enforcement and permitting since 1968, um, for, for the large part with some change, uh, like, for example, some municipalities have adopted their own ordinance and then later decided several years later, they didn't want to be in that game anymore. And they punted it back to the, they rescinded their ordinance and punted those responsibilities back to the county to do it for them. And so we currently have 21 municipalities that we cover, uh, and they will be the same 21 under this new ordinance. Um, and there are no substantive changes of any kind with the zoning that's on the ground with those parcels in those communities.
Okay, thank you. Other members of the public?
So then what, so then what, what he's saying is there's only 21 members out of 67?
Out of 76. 21 is correct. That's the number.
21 only joined out of 76 municipalities.
There's been 21 there for a long time, Mr. Manta. Many other municipalities choose to have their own zoning, which is their choice.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else in the public? Other members of the public? Any other members of the public? If not, can I have a motion for adjournment?
So moved, lay on.
Ms. McDermott, do we have a second for Ms. McDermott?
Wait, there's a gentleman with his hand up, Mr. McGinley. Jason something, I think.
What's his name?
Jason Lucas.
Oh, Jason, okay. Jason Lucas, you have your hand up?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead, Mr. Lucas.
Yes, um, and by the way, just so you guys know, I'm sure, I think there's other people that do want to speak that maybe don't have their video on, but there's the option to raise your hand. And so if you look at any of these people, if they have that option on, that means that they would also like to speak.
Okay, what is your question, Mr. Lucas? Thank you.
Yes, I have several, uh, questions regarding the removal of the board of elections that we.
That has nothing to do with this public hearing. This is a public hearing on zoning ordinance, Mr. Lucas.
Earlier on the YouTube, there was a video saying that the meeting tonight was about the board of elections.
There is, and when we get to the voting session, there is. Not this public hearing, Mr. Lucas. Okay?
Alright, well, thank you anyway, then.
No, that's no problem. Uh, let's see. I, you're the only, that, Mr. Lucas was the only hand I saw raised. Okay. Do we have a mo, we have a motion for adjournment from Ms. McDermott, who we have a second?
Second to adjourn.
Mr. Haus? All in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposition? Any abstentions? None heard, motion carries. We will now go into the voting session. We already did the pledge in the moment of silence just a few minutes ago with the public hearing, so we won't be doing that. Call of session to order. Roll call, please.
Griffith?
Here.
Haug?
Here.
Ms. Howes? Ms. Howes?
Here.
Mr. Durbin?
Present.
Mr. Perry?
Here.
Ms. Radel?
Here.
Ms. Edman?
Here.
Mr. Schnee?
Present.
Mr. Urban?
Here.
Mr. Vog?
Here.
Mr. McGinley?
Present. Thank you. Uh, we'll go down to recognition of the sermon on parlamations. We do have one retirement, Robert Muth, who was administrative officer three with the area agency on aging. Uh, so we will send a letter to her congratulating her on her retirement and wishing her good health in her future. Ms. Hill was on earlier. Lynn Hill? Ms. Hill, are you on with us now?
I'm sorry, Tim, were you talking about me?
Lynn Hill.
Oh, no, this is Stephanie.
Okay, no, you're coming up, Stephanie, shortly. Is Lynn here? I see your icon. Are you muted, Ms. Hill? And the reason I asked Ms. Hill to come on is she, uh, received notice this week that she was, um, acknowledged to be into a new group, uh, a very highly acclaimed group and, uh, I wish I had that in front of me. I do not. Uh, I would have liked to recognize Ms. Hill for that accomplishment and certainly it's, it's a very much a feather and a hat to Luzerne County for Ms. Hill to be acknowledged in that way.
If I, if I, it's, it's the Cedar, uh, Cent, CCAPS, uh, Center for Excellence.
Okay.
County Leadership Program, class of 2021.
Very good. Well, certainly is quite an acknowledgement. Thank you. Uh, Mr. DeLuca, do you want to, uh, provide information regards to the executive session, please?
Yes, Councilman, executive session, uh, via teams from 5:30 PM until 6:30 PM. Uh, we received, uh, there were, this was discussion regarding the case of Hampel versus Luzerne County. And, uh, also a discussion regarding potential litigation related to, uh, the position of district attorney.
Thank you. Um. I had a request from, um, Ms. Salavanas. First of all, I'd like to congratulate Ms. Salavanas and her husband, you know, I think everybody's aware that, uh, you know, they brought a, uh, a child into the world in January of this year. And I'm certainly, it's a great experience for them and very happy for them. Uh, in light of that, I, I asked Ms. Salavanas if she would want to present her report early on. Obviously, she has some, uh, mother responsibilities with a young child. And she was, uh, very happy with that, uh, to be able to present a report. So, uh, before we get into additions in relation to the voting sessions, I'd like to have Ms. Salavanas do her annual district attorney's office report.
Thank you, Tim. How was everybody today? Um, uh, I'm glad to be here and thank you for, uh, the wishes, uh, for, uh, uh, me having my baby. Uh, thankfully, she's a good baby and, uh, the only, the only problem is I'm a little sleepy these days, so excuse me if I, uh, if I'm a little forgetful. Um, so I sent everybody, uh, the PowerPoint slide. Um, hopefully you guys have it in hand. Um, I, I wanted to, uh, typically, you guys know, I give like an extensive presentation, uh, for our annual, uh, report to you every year. Um, you know, with COVID last year and the pandemic that, um, it was a bit different. It was a different year for the district attorney's office, for the criminal justice system and for the courts, um, altogether. Um, so you'll see that it, it is a little bit shorter this year because, um, we had some challenges and that would be my focus was on COVID and, and what we went through, um, uh, as the district attorney's office and prosecuting cases. So if you flip to the first page, the pandemic, um, as I stated, this changed the landscape, escape of the criminal justice system and, um, we had to find ways to adapt to our new normal. Um, our priority was to make sure that everybody's health and safety, um, that it was our priority, I should say, and that, um, we needed to find ways to assist, uh, the, the prosecutors, our victims, our witnesses, um, when coming to court and making sure that they were safe doing that. Um, the courts, the district attorney's office, conflict council, the public defender's office, we worked very hard to make sure people felt safe, um, uh, when, uh, when the cases were moving through the system. Um, but it, it did create challenges. Um, we couldn't have large groups together any longer. Um, picking juries was a, a huge challenge because, um, we would be over the limit that the governor would allow us to have in a room. So we were trying to find ways of how we can move cases, um, without, um, uh, putting people in uncomfortable positions and violating any of the CDC guidelines. Um, fortunately, uh, for the majority of the, the year, we were able to move cases along. Um, on, on the next page, you'll see new cases opened. We, we were able to open 3,177 cases in 2020. Um, it is a major decrease from, uh, years before because, you know, people were, uh, in their homes. They weren't leaving their homes because of COVID. Law enforcement was being very careful in what they were doing, so, and, and limiting contact with individuals. So, uh, the number of cases decreased drastically and, um, and that doesn't mean that certain crimes weren't taking place. We'll go through that later on in the discussion. Um, the case is called on the next page, you'll see the case is called for trial by judge. We had Judge Ojello called 109 cases last year, Judge Lupus, 811, Judge Skorowski, 699 cases, and Judge Vog, 1,386 cases. And again, it's during a time where it was very difficult to make sure that we were, to have these cases move through the system. Um, of the cases, we were actually able to try 40 cases and that includes, that's jury trials and bench trials. Um, and one was a, a homicide trial in which we conducted at the Mohegan Sun. Um, it was challenging. A wonderful, our wonderful prosecutor, Tony Ross, prosecuted that case with, um, Drew McLaughlin and, and Gary Scott. And, um, they did a fabulous job with the challenges that we were faced with. Um, I felt that the, speaking to the jurors, that they felt comfortable, um, with the process that we had in place, um, keeping everybody at safe distances, again, following CDC guidelines. And that's an example of what we had to do to make sure that these cases continued. And, uh, fortunately, we got a guilty thanks to the wonderful, uh, staff here at the office and our prosecutors. Um, juvenile cases, we had 264 juvenile cases, again, drastic decrease, um, in 2020 from the years before. Um, and that goes back to COVID and we were seeing decreases because people weren't leaving their homes. People were staying at home and staying safe. Um, so we saw decreasing criminal activity. Um, of, uh, I think it's important, I, I emphasize this every year, we had 11 direct file cases. Um, and why that's important to stress is that those cases are, um, juvenile cases in which they, they commit, uh, very serious crimes and with extensive criminal histories, they are directly filed into adult court. Um, and we are seeing an increase in these cases occurring in Luzerne County. And unfortunately, these cases are, uh, they use a lot of resources and can be expensive. Uh, because, you know, you have decertification hearings, which are, um, battle of, of experts between our office and the defense attorney, and it gets costly. So we, we, um, spent a lot of money in 2020 with our experts and, and during these decertification hearings. Um, on the next page, again, it goes back to, uh, COVID challenges, uh, the use of extensive resources to have COVID trials. Um, we had individuals, um, I, I went through the, uh, resources we used with regard to, um, to these trials, but I think it's important to emphasize, um, how, how we had to, um, uh, put victims, witnesses through longer wait periods, which was very challenging, especially I always look at our child victims, um, when it takes longer to pick a trial, a jury for a trial, you have child victims who are sitting around longer, um, and enduring more pain because of that. And I say it's revictimization of these kids because they're going through such a traumatic event. Adults going through trials is hard. Imagine children. So we were trying to find ways in which we can better suit our victims, our witnesses during COVID times. Um, but the courts worked, again, worked well with us in trying to make sure that we were moving these cases and, um, keeping everybody safe. Again, creating an environment that everyone feels safe during the trials. Um, we actually, an example too, um, if people wanted to be here for these cases, they didn't want them to be continued. And that's why we fought with the courts. We tried to keep the courts open as long as we could, um, while we felt that everybody was safe. Of course, we had to close down for a little while because of the, the, um, uptick in cases here in Luzerne County. Wanted to make sure that no one was injured when coming into, their health was placed in jeopardy when coming into the courthouse. So we had to close down for some time. But, uh, people really wanted to see these cases moving. We had a case where an eight and a half month, uh, pregnant, uh, woman came in just to testify for her niece in an abuse, uh, case. And that's what we were saying, people did want to be here, did want to stay involved in these cases and wanted to see them continue. So we tried our hardest to, uh, keep the cases moving through the system. Um, on the next page, uh, a lot of questions come in, uh, to our office about domestic violence and, and what we saw during COVID. And that's why I wanted to, uh, focus my presentation on that today. Um, domestic violence, we saw a drastic increase, um, already this year of strangulation, simple assaults and terroristic threats. Because last year, we weren't seeing them. And the reason I believe that that was happening is because our officers with COVID, they weren't able to fully assess certain situations. Um, when officers are arriving at homes, when they receive a call of, uh, for help, they're, they, they're typically going into homes and assessing the situation and being able to talk to the victims and say, ask them what's going on, see the entire environment. However, with COVID, that wasn't possible. We weren't able to go into the homes and see the, the full picture of what was taking place. So it, it was hard for, um, for our officers in making arrests. Now we're seeing that the uptick is occurring because people now feel comfortable again. They're calling the police. The police are able to get more involved to see the full picture. And charges are being filed. We're seeing that, um, violations are now being filed again, uh, PFAs. Um, that we're seeing that, um, that shelters are opening up again. Shelters were closed because of COVID. And when you're abused and you have nowhere to go because the abuser has full control over you, you feel like you, there's no place, no one you could turn to. And so, um, when the shelters closed down, we saw that the calls of abuse weren't coming in because they didn't know who to turn to and where they could actually go. So, um, again, we're seeing that uptick. We're already seeing it in this first quarter of this year in our office. Um, I do want to emphasize that we have, uh, started a new program, started it last year in the county. It's called Handle With Care. Um, and I have to give, uh, a, a, a shout out to our, um, our Luzerne County Human Services and the Luzerne Wyoming County Systems of Care. We've been working, law enforcement has been working with them on this initiative. And what Handle With Care is, it's, it's a way for law enforcement officers to, to send a brief notice to a child's school when that child has been identified at the scene of a traumatic event. So say, for instance, a child is, um, is in the home, um, when an officer arrives and finds that, say, mom is being abused by dad. And this child is now going through a traumatic event. And do you expect that child the next day to go to school and be able to focus on their studies and, and not act out and, you know, do things of that nature where the teachers and the school don't understand, um, why that child is behaving that way when typically they're, they're great in class, they're, um, they're lively, they're happy. Um, and why all of a sudden their demeanor changes. And so we want to work with the schools to let them know, this is what's going on and we need to make sure that we're protecting our children and making sure that they're getting the care that they need. So, um, I'm happy about that. Our law enforcement has really been stepping up. We started with a small group, uh, focusing on certain school districts, but we will be expanding that to all school districts in, um, Luzerne County because I think it's such a great initiative. Um. I'm sorry, did I, I may have skipped a page. Um, the child abuse investigations, I apologize, uh, for that. Uh, that was before domestic violence. Um, child abuse is another area that people ask me about when it. Child abuse is another area that people ask me about when it comes to last year and COVID. And did we see a change in child abuse cases being reported? And I do want to say we did. It was about a 20% decrease in recording of child abuse last year. That's what we were finding, if not more. And that doesn't mean that that child abuse is not occurring, it just means that it's not being reported. So, we're now, like domestic violence, we're now seeing more of these cases coming through and investigations that we are reviewing in our office. I did want to emphasize that teachers, as we know, teachers are mandated reporters. And as they're doing, last year, as they were doing virtual teaching, there were a lot of calls that came into law enforcement from teachers because they were able to see a glimpse into the homes of these children and able to see if a child is being abused or hear the parents in the background talking about certain criminal activity, seeing that children aren't even participating in school activities. So, there have been a lot of, there has been a lot of coordination with teachers and law enforcement to try to make sure that if we can, if we see that there is anything going on with these children, if we can help, we are. But again, we did see a decrease, but it is starting to increase as the year is continuing on with child abuse. The next page, the Drug Task Force and Gun Violence Reduction Task Force. Again, we, last year, we saw an increase due to COVID. And as you guys can probably imagine, because of COVID, that came, with COVID came financial stress, came mental health issues, depression, anxiety that people were suffering. And at the same time, the meetings, the AA meetings, the places that people who are clean are going to, to help them are closed because COVID wouldn't allow them to be open and the guidelines wouldn't allow it because of the large groups and for the health and safety of everyone. But at the same time, this is what these individuals needed to stay clean. And unfortunately, they turned to the streets and began using again. We saw an increase in overdose fatalities. The year before, it started decreasing because of all the great work we were doing with our Stop Coalition, Stop Overdoses in Luzerne County. And we're seeing a decrease in overdoses, but when COVID hit, it started going up again. And that was, that's, it's very upsetting to me. We do see still that fentanyl and meth are still the drug of choice. Meth has become more popular and, but heroin and fentanyl, mixed with fentanyl, is still a drug of choice out there. And that's where we're seeing these overdoses still. In 2020, we initiated 261 cases, which led to 126 arrests through the task force. And we seized $311,000 in drug funds and seized 34 weapons. And at the same time, with the Gun Violence Reduction Task Force, and this is the task force that was created, if you guys remember, we received a $250,000 grant, which was competitive, a competitive grant we received. And it was for the gun violence reduction and trying to get illegal weapons off the streets. And so, we have been doing an amazing job, working closely with the Drug Task Force because as you can imagine, illegal drugs and drugs go hand in hand. So, they've been working amazingly together and doing great work, as you see with the arrests that are taking place and the 34 weapons that we got off the streets last year. We also made 82 arrests when it comes to PICS. And that is the Pennsylvania Instant Check System. So, that's when someone applies for a gun in a gun shop, it goes to the state police. And if there's a red flag that comes up, it's sent to us to investigate. And our Gun Violence Reduction Task Force is following up on these cases. And you're seeing a lot of, say, straw purchases going on, things of that nature, that we're finding more intimate knowledge of the gang organizations or drug organizations and how they're trying to get their hands on these weapons. So, we made 82 arrests last year, and I apologize, I have it here. And as of this year, we have 47 pending right now and 35 convictions. As of this year, we have 23 cases pending. So, we continue to work hard to keep these weapons off the streets. And I have to say that when we had a meeting with the grant organization, they were commending us for the work that we're doing with PICS because we are one of, I believe, the only district attorney's office that is actively trying to do this, and we are the most active office in Pennsylvania. So, they were very happy to see what we were doing here in Luzerne County. On the next page, grants. With, last year, you may remember, we had to do an amendment to our budget to include grants that we received through the DUI task force. And we, with that, that, and, sorry, I just want to go back a little. If you remember, Catholic Social Services shut down a certain division, and that included the DUI enforcement in Luzerne County. So, our office had to step in and wanted to step in to take over that enforcement. And what that includes is Community Traffic Safety Grant as well as the Police Traffic Safety. The Community Traffic Safety Grant is focused a lot on safe disposal sites, seatbelt checks, grandkids, and educating grandparents on the safety of it. The Police Traffic Safety is DUI checkpoints, aggressive driving, and buckle up in Pennsylvania. And we have been actively working with our police departments, making sure that they're out on the streets, doing these roving patrols, making sure that people are safe when driving. Because obviously, especially with DUIs, drinking and driving, we don't want to see anyone lose their life or be seriously injured because of someone's foolish act. So, we're putting a lot of funds into the hands of our police departments to make sure we're trying to keep everybody safe while driving on the roads. We also received a grant from the International Chiefs of Police, and that was for education for drug enforcement, for the drug recognition experts, which we call DREs. And so, what they did was they gave us money that we could apply to our police departments, allow them to pick officers who want to be more educated on how to recognize people who are under the influence and become experts for us in court. We are actually having a training in April, I believe, and that is our first DRE training that will be taking place. We have 16 officers that will be going. It's a two-week course. And if all 16 pass this course, it is a very difficult one. But if all 16 pass, we will be the only, the county with the highest number of DREs in the state. And that's impressive to me and to the organization. And that's, they were thrilled that we were able to get this grant and move forward like we are, as aggressively as we are. And then the Department of Community Economic Development. And to this one, I want to give a shout out to Senator Udcheck. John Udcheck sponsored this grant for us. He knew that we put in a grant last year to try to get resources, equipment for our office. Unfortunately, we were unable to get it. I don't know why, but because of that, he found another grant that we would potentially be able to get those, the equipment through. He sponsored it, and we were able to get $50,000 in grant funding that started last year. And as you guys know, because you're going to be doing a vote on it to amend our budget, the $50,000 is going into our budget this year because we received it this year. And what that money did was it allowed us to build interview rooms in our office and for our detectives. And so, we can audio and video record all interviews that are taking place and offer that to all law enforcement throughout the county, whoever needs it. It also allowed us to develop, to put in place, and it's called an AFIS machine, Live Scan. It's a fingerprint machine for those who are being arrested. And so, in order to increase our statistics and fingerprinting, I wanted to make sure we had something in place here in Luzerne County that was available to all law enforcement whenever they needed it. And so, we are in the process of ordering that device and putting it in a room that we had prepared and set up for law enforcement to use. So, I want to thank Senator Udcheck for sponsoring that and getting Luzerne County that $50,000 in equipment that will help law enforcement throughout the entire county. And then with the budget, I really did a quick overview for you because I know you guys have a lot on your plate tonight. So, I just wanted to let you know, our 2020 budget, the adopted budget was $5,161,803. We expended $4,623,639 with the savings last year of $538,163. You guys all know how I operate as district attorney. I watch every dollar and make sure that we are spending appropriately. And if we don't have to spend, we are giving it back so it could be used for any other expense in the county. And as you see, over half a million dollars was saved last year just in the work that we've done, myself, my office manager, in making sure that we are not spending frivolously. We are watching every dollar and making sure that our budgets are accurate when we submit them. And I hope that you guys have seen that over the years. I know that last year, I believe it was about savings of $800,000 over my time as district attorney. So, I'm happy to say, in my nine-plus years as district attorney, I've saved the county over a million dollars. And I'm very proud of that. I'm proud of the work that we are doing in the district attorney's office. And I do want to make a plug. It's not me as district attorney that makes this office what it is, a tremendous office that fights every day for our community. It's our team. It's everyone in this office, from our prosecutors to our detectives to our support staff. Everybody is a team here. We work together to make sure that the community is safe and that we are doing everything in our power to represent this county well. And I just want to take this time to thank everyone that I've worked with, our law enforcement and our county council, who has never really questioned me in when it came to the budget and knowing that I watch every dollar and that if there's any place to cut, you know that I will be honest with you. So, that's really my wrap-up here tonight. If anybody has any questions for me, please feel free to ask me.
Stephanie, it's Sheila. I have one question. Who does your grant writing?
Well, it's myself and my office manager, we do the grant writing for this office. So, we do a little bit of everything here in this office. And say, the grants that we've worked on, they've actually used some of our grants as examples for other areas to see how to write a grant. So, I'm very proud of the work that we've done on our grants.
Good, good.
Sal Vandez, thank you very much. You're right, I think you've done a great job managing your budget over the many years, and we appreciate those efforts. You're a little bit, you have another role a little bit later on in the agenda as far as your budget amendment.
Right.
Hang on with us, we would appreciate that.
Okay, thank you very much, Steph.
Thank you. Mr. DeLuca?
Yeah, you had mentioned, I neglected to mention the executive session that was held last week following our special meeting on March 2nd. We had an executive session via Teams. And again, that was a situation where we discussed, council discussed potential litigation related to the vacancy in the district attorney's office.
Okay, thank you. We're down to additions or deletions to the voting session agenda?
I have an addition, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
I'd like to move the I-80 tolling to the voting session tonight for two reasons. One, the committee suggested that. And secondly, time is of the essence because there's going to be action on that according to the press release this springtime. So, I think the sooner the better, if council could take action on that.
Okay. The reason, Mr. Haas, it's on the work session because I think there are some questions in that regard. But let's see what the council majority would like to do.
Very good, thank you.
I make a motion, we bring it over.
Mr. Griffith made a motion. Do we have a second for Mr. Griffith?
Second.
Mr. Haas? All in favor of moving it from the work session agenda to the voting session agenda, indicate by saying aye.
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 Any in opposition? I would be in opposition, but that's only myself. And any abstentions? Okay, we'll make it number 11?
Thank you.
On the voting session agenda then, okay?
Mr. McGinnley?
Yes, yes, ma'am. Go ahead.
It's Linda Howke. I would like to add a resolution to declare a vacancy for district attorney since she is a candidate for office.
Okay. Do we have a second for Ms. Howke?
Second, Walter.
Mr. Griffith? All in favor, indicate by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any in opposition? Any abstentions? That will become number 12, Ms. Howke. Okay?
Thank you.
Do we have that covered now? Do we have a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved, Sheila.
Ms. Saiman, do we have a second for Ms. Saiman?
Second, Kendra.
Ms. Radel? All in favor, indicate by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any in opposition? Any abstentions? None heard, motion carries. First motion, any motions to suspend the bylaws regarding the requirement a majority of those participating in the meeting must be physically present at the meeting. Ms. Howke, do you make that motion?
Yes, I move.
Do we have a second for Ms. Howke?
Second, ma'am.
Ms. McDermott? All in favor, indicate by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any in opposition?
Yes, Walter.
Mr. Griffith? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Now, we're open for public comment on agenda items. Open now for public comment on agenda items.
This is Mark Rago speaking.
Go ahead, Mr. Rago.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I beg your indulgence for, since the DA is on and she's going to be for the budget amendment. So, I will address that first. First of all, I would like to extend my well wishes and best wishes to her and her husband on the birth of their child also. And also, I have a question with regards to civil cases resuming, if that is included on this. And also, you know, targeting, there's, the elderly being targeted by scammers is once again creeping up in light of the COVID pandemic. So, if she could answer those two questions, I'd appreciate that. Also, with regards to the vacancy on the election board, I would ask if the recommendations from the Election Inquiry Committee regarding new board members will be implemented by the Office of Law and by the ABC Committee as far as, with regards to new board members of the election board for, you know, their role and their roles and responsibilities. That was discussed very extensively, Mr. Chair, during the Election Inquiry Committee. And I just wanted to know if that will take effect once the I would ask if the recommendations from the election inquiry committee regarding new board members will be implemented by the Office of Law and by the ABC Committee as far as, with regards to new board members of the election board for, you know, their role and their roles and responsibilities. That was discussed very extensively, Mr. Chair, during the election inquiry committee. And I just wanted to know if that will take effect once the board members have been voted in and appointed after tonight. That would be my question. And also with regards to what was, what was the new, the new one besides the DA's appointment was, there was another addition to the agenda, Mr. McGinley. I apologize.
From the work session?
Yes, from the, yes, from the toll bridges, yes. I urge the council to pass the letter because it is vital. I sent an email regarding news stories that gas prices are surging along with inflation. This is an unnecessary, unwarranted additional expense to all motorists in our county. And this is just going to exasperate and also put a very detrimental effect against our economic, our local economy in our county. So I would urge the council to please pass this because the truckers and all of the people are going to bear the burden of the costs in regards to food prices and utility bills and also with regards to them, their impediment of going to work if they even can have a job because this is going to cost a lot of, a lot more layoffs. So I urge the council, please send the letter to our legislators in Harrisburg and also to PennDOT because this is just, this is just outrageous. That is all I have, Mr. Chair.
Any other members of the public?
Mr. McGinley?
Wait a minute.
Mr. McGinley?
Then you'll have an opportunity.
I know, but I want you to read the resolution so they have a chance to comment on that. We added that to the agenda and they don't know what it is.
Well, if they have the work session agenda, it's included there.
The one for the DA?
I think it's posted now.
Yeah, but the people who are there can't see it. If they're on my phone.
I think it is posted, but let me see.
But the folks who are calling by telephone cannot see it.
Well, the resolution is to declare a vacancy in the office of district attorney because the district attorney has filed petitions to run as an elected candidate for the elected office of judge. And the charter says that no district attorney shall file petitions without resigning the seat. So she is not eligible actually to hold the seat now that she has filed petitions and she's a candidate for that office. That's the resolution.
Very good. Thank you so much. I appreciate that.
That's in the, sort of my simple kind of terms, but that's correct. I think that's well done. Okay. Other members of the public?
Ronald Knapp?
Go ahead, Mr. Knapp. I'm sorry, you were, you had chimed in there earlier. Go ahead.
Thank you, Chairman McGinley and the rest of the council for listening in on my opinion. I just wanted to thank Stephanie Salavantis and the fine job she's done as DA and to include a healthy and prosperous newborn and for their family and prosperity going forward. I wanted to mention, I have skepticism with regards to the toll bridges, Resolution 2. I have a problem with this because if we observe how other methods of tolls and roads, like the P8 Turnpike, the situation the commission is facing. Pennsylvania Secretary of Transportation Leslie Richards testified in March of 2019 that the toll road near bankruptcy because revenue brought in for upkeep of the road got diverted to other entities such as upgrades to the Erie International Airport Terminal building to the creation of trails that connect bike routes near Penn State University. My question is, is the same thing going to happen with the money collected at the bridges allocated for some other purpose than what is intended for? Please excuse my skepticism. It's a bad circumstance, the Pennsylvania Turnpike that they're in. And all because of allocated resources to other entities. As far as Resolution 3, ordinance allowing for the reduction of the penalty period fees for the 2021 Luzerne County real estate taxes. Common sense would tell you people are still hurting on this, in this valley from being locked down.
Mr. Knapp, I think that's part of the, excuse me, Mr. Knapp, that's part of the work session agenda. That's not in the voting session agenda.
I apologize. I will pick that up later then.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You have another opportunity. Other members of the public?
Yes. Hi, it's Alyssa Fusaro. How are you?
Okay, go ahead, Alyssa.
Well, as far as, as being a past week victim of domestic violence first, I just want to thank you, Stephanie, for all of your hard work. Congratulations on the new baby. But I do, I wouldn't have said this, but I do want to piggyback off of something another caller said. I would like to know what we are doing about targeting these people, the scammers that are targeting. I received another phone call today and it literally said, it said, "Dear citizen", and it was a recorded message, but it said, "Dear citizen, your", and I think they had my thing mixed up, but it said, "Your disability and your social security will be cut off shortly if you don't call us." And that concerned me because a senior citizen could take that very seriously. And I find that a major issue because obviously I know not to take that seriously, but if I was older and I didn't know any better, you know, that might be a major issue. So I do want somebody to talk, talk, you know, I want, want to talk a little bit about what we are doing to ensure that these are, these scammers are being handled for our seniors.
Thank you. Other members of the public?
Mr. Manten?
Go ahead, Mr. Manten.
Yeah, I also want to piggyback on that. I've been getting several calls about people saying, if you don't pay your rainwater tax, you won't get your stimulus check. I mean, this, this is people that are, they're abusing people's consciences because like if you have a conscience and you're supposed to pay a bill, you pay it. If you, if you don't get a service for the bill, why should you pay it? So, so the people that are in charge, again, like Stephanie Salavantis, they should look into this fraud because people are really scared and people don't have the money to, to be wasting and have that fear, oh, if you don't pay your sanitary bill, you're, you're going to have the sanitary bill paid or your stimulus bill pay the lien before you get your stimulus money. So I, I just don't understand how people could maliciously, maliciously come out and say something like that. And I'll sit back and listen to the answer. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Any other members of the public? Okay. Go ahead, Mr. Dwyer.
Yes, Mr. Haas motioned to get the letter about the tolls on the I-80 bridge added to the meeting. So I would be able to comment on that now, correct?
Correct.
I, I think the county should take a strong stance on that. We have a $75, or 75 cent, excuse me, a gallon gas tax that was supposed to be for road and bridge repair. Luzerne County had an addendum to the vehicle registration, which hopefully is going to end at the end of this year for road and bridge repair. Where's all this money going? I pay state taxes, I pay local taxes, I pay county taxes, I pay federal taxes. And now I'm paying three or four more taxes. It really needs, this needs to be taken seriously. And I'm looking toward county leadership to, to send a strong message to the elected state representatives and to Harrisburg on this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Other members of the public? Okay, let's go to the next page. Motion to approve the minutes of the February 23rd meeting. Do we have a motion?
So moved, Leanne.
Ms. McDermott, do we have a second for Ms. McDermott?
Second, Kendra.
Ms. Radel? On the question? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Any in opposition? Any abstentions?
No.
Opposition, Mr. Griffith and Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Okay. Any, any abstentions? None heard. Motion carries. Moving down to the next motion. Motion to approve the minutes of the March 2nd meeting. Do we have a motion?
So moved, Leanne.
Ms. McDermott, do we have a second?
Second, Sheila.
Ms. Saiman? On the question? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Any in opposition?
No.
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
No. No.
Mr. Griffith?
Yep.
Any abstentions? None heard. Motion carries. Nothing under old business, moving down under county manager?
Mr. McGinley, I have old business real quick.
Go ahead, Mr. Griffith.
My, my, my old business is regarding the resolution. It was passed in February 9th. I know that it was sent to all members of council today. And my concern is, as it was at the last time we had an issue with resolutions, is when council passes a resolution, I don't understand why it has to go to the Office of Law to be checked. We've already voted. It's all in the minutes. It should go to Sharon. Sharon should write it up as amended and post it. Send it down to be signed by the manager five days later. It comes back and it becomes on the website. That's not happening. And I don't understand under whose direction that's not happening for. Our charter clearly says when a resolution is passed by council, it goes to the manager for a five-day rule and then he gets to send it back. That resolution is gone since February the 9th and is now March the 8th or March the 9th. That's all a month. That should have been sent down, signed by the manager and sent back and put up on the website. So what is the, why, why is stuff going to the Office of Law? Under whose direction does that happen?
The Office of Law always reviews things, every, every ordinance or resolution to make sure it's in compliance. If you remember that meeting specifically, Mr. Griffith, and I remember it very specifically, we had a multitude of back and forth in regards to potential amendments and other changes in that particular resolution. And it took, I would say, probably in the area of 40 minutes to an hour to finalize that. So it was not an easy editing to make sure we included everything.
But, but that, that is done by the clerk of council, not the Office of Law?
Yes, the clerk, but she needs assistance at times because there's a lot of things that go through the office with the clerk that she needs help. And another set of eyes many times is very important so that things end up correctly instead of having to go through more revisions.
So how does that, how does that coincide with the five-day rule that's in our charter that says when a resolution's passed by council, the manager has five days to look at it and send it back?
We'll certainly look at that, Mr. Griffith.
Well, no, that's a charter issue.
I said, we'll certainly look at that.
There's nothing to look at. So, so how could he review it? Doesn't the Office of Law do that for the manager for his five-day window? Isn't that the point?
I don't know what the manager requires, sir.
Well, there's a five-day rule that he's supposed to sign it and send it back to council. And that's not happening. So we're violating the charter. And I want to, and I want to know under whose direction that happens because it wasn't a motion to council. So.
Okay.
Okay, so I, I wish that would not happen in the future. I think when we pass resolutions, they need to be drafted accordingly, set up on a.
Mr. Griffith, we will do everything possible to get it done in a timely manner. Sometimes people are not available all the time. Sometimes people may have illnesses. Unfortunately, you know, we've had several different situations this winter. Hopefully, as we go forward, we won't face some of those.
Right. And the Office of Law sent us back an ordinance that's not correct. So, so why did we send it to the Office of Law?
All the corrections have been made, Mr. Griffith.
But it was in fact not correct.
All the corrections have been made.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Going down to number one, motion to adopt an ordinance admitting the 2025 fiscal year budget for Luzerne County. This is regards to the debt service. And we had this motion two weeks ago and decided to postpone it at that point in time. And now it's back on the voting session this evening. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Urban? Do we have a second for, excuse me, Mr. Urban?
I'll, I'll second the motion just so we get some discussion.
All right, Mr. Griffith, you makes a second. On the question, Mr. Swetz, do you want to speak first?
I would like to, Mr. Chair. In your pocket is some of the information that was requested. Just to summarize, between the federal reimbursement, the state reimbursement and the money that the county borrowed specifically for the voting machines, county received a little more than 3.4 million. The machines and deliveries themselves, the delivery charge was 2.8 million. And there's 199,73250 bill due every year for 40 years. So county in 2019, and I put some of the submittal. I didn't want, I just put the pertinent five pages, not the whole submittal. County approved 3.4 million. The project is 3.6 million. So the project is more than the money that's received. And it talked about the cash that we have now and the future expenses. The future expenses are 199,73250 for 2021, 2022, 2023, and 2024. So there's, there's more expenses than cash. And also, the administration would need to add to those budgets going forward. And also, as we previously talked from the attachment from Mr. Shear, that primarily the savings would be felt in 2030. We had two, three different scenarios, 1 million, 2 million, and 3 million. We obviously don't have that money to pay back. The max is the 613,964.69. But if we were to pay that back, we're going to have substantial savings in '30, but add to this year and the next three years' budgets. So that's why we don't recommend doing it. And I believe the manager also gave some, so, a attachment of some of the notes from the meeting.
Okay. Question?
My, my question for Mr. Swetz is, in the block on the ordinance, we just made a motion and a second for an ordinance that has no, no number in that space. What is the number supposed to be in that space? On the ordinance? It says, "A public hearing having been held on a certain day", what, how much money? Is it $2 million we're talking about in the ordinance?
Uh, I believe when we actually did this last meeting, it was like 2,000,0038. I am telling council that all that is available is 613,964.69. That's what we have in cash. And if council was to move that entire amount, we will then need to add almost $800,000 in this year and the next three budgets.
So what happened to the 1.6 million that we got from the state?
As I said before, it was used on the machines. So we got, I think that the question that was, that was raised was, soon as this money came in, it was going to be put on the debt service that was brought up in numerous meetings. It was used to pay for the machines. We still had to pay for the machines. County administration had to pay 2.8 million to pay for the machines. We received 1.6 million from the state, 343,000 from the feds, and we borrowed 1.4. You take that 3.4, less the 2.8 from the machines, that gives you $600,000. That's what we have.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes, Ms. Howke, go ahead.
It's Linda, and I was one of the people that was involved in the questioning in that meeting about, you know, how the money was going to be used. And I believe the question was, if the project came in under and there was money left over with the borrowing, what would happen to that money? And I don't know that we considered at the time that there would be an overextension of the amount of money that, that was being used and how the, any kind of refund. And how the, any kind of refund from the state would come in, any kind of reimbursement from the state would come in. But the idea was that whatever funds we had, we would use. And if we borrowed more than we needed to, would we be returning that? And the answer was yes, we would. But if I'm understanding your numbers correctly, it actually was, it didn't cover it. So there is still a charge, and so there is no that was borrowed in excess of what we actually needed. Am I correct?
You are correct. So the, the total project, less the total expenses, is short a little less than 200,000. Today, the county has 600,000 in cash. This March, even though we didn't get the bill on March 1st, and I put that in there as well, this March and the next three years, we owe 199,73250. So in the essence of the total project until 2024, county's short a little less than $200,000.
Okay, so if we had known how much money we were getting in, in, in the reimbursement, would we have changed what we were borrowing at all? Would we have increased it? Would we have decreased it? What would we have done at that time?
Well, I think we didn't know the exact amount.
Right.
And we actually ended up decreasing, we decreased two things. Outside of this, but still relevant to the 2019 borrowing, reduced a million dollars for 911 because of a grant that Maverick Strategy got to county.
Right.
And between the LCC meeting and the voting meeting in the courthouse, we reduced the 1.8 million to the 1.4 million on the promise of 400,000. And we didn't have a letter from the state, we just thought it would be around 400,000. Again, I think in consultation with Maverick Strategy. So we, we already cut the borrowing from 1.8 to 1.4. I would say that if we left it at 1.8, we would have had extra money and could have paid it back. So that's the two things we did. We didn't have the exact amount from the state. It was 60%, but we didn't know when we were gonna get it. And the feds, we were thought around 400,000, it came in a little bit less. So for the total project, we have less money than, than the total project will cost us.
Okay, so, um, do we have money budgeted to make this year's payment?
When the borrowing was done in 2019, all the work was done in 2019. So if, to make this year's payment, we have cash in a bank account, we really should move money from the reserve fund to make the payment. And we could do that at, at a future meeting. Again, we have cash in account, it was all encompassed in 2019, and we didn't have the bills then. We knew we were paying 199,000. We didn't know if that was from January to December, if that was from March until February. We didn't know the period because we didn't get the bill. And as I said, as of today, even though it was due March 1st, and emails were sent, accounts payable and myself still doesn't have the March 1st bill for 199,73250.
Okay. Alright, thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, Mr. McGinley, Steve Urban here.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I'm looking at your notes here in the payment schedule, and, and obviously the equipment costs 2.8 million dollars at the time. And the 199,73250 would typically, I mean, based on the license and warranty fees, would be billed annually at 199,73250. And you would, I'm, I'm assuming as an accountant, you would anticipate that bill in every annual budget thereafter. You know, starting in 2021. So, you know, you're slicing and dicing like this bill. I mean, we're looking at the original cost of the machines only, and the reimbursements of the machines only. Regardless of, of the actual licensing and warranty fees that we knew about at the time. Quite honestly, you know, you should have built that into the cost of each annual budget thereafter from, you know, 2021, 22, 23, 24. That should be programmed in the budget, should not even be included in the reimbursement part whatsoever. So, you know, I think, you know, any monies that came in should be reimbursed for the equipment only. Any anticipated expense as far as warranties or licensing, that's a different cost. You know, even though you're trying to lump it in under the same subject matter. Quite honestly, I think council usurped the power of the Board of Elections at that time. I think county management usurped the power of the Board of Elections at that time by going out and buying these machines because they never approved them under Title 25. But, you know, quite honestly, I think if there's money left over, all of it should be promised to go back toward the purchase of the machines originally. We borrow the money, let's pay it back and then be done with this bill.
Anyone else?
Yeah, and, and Mr. McGinley, Mr. Swetz, I guess it's 1.4 million dollars that we took out of, actually we took out of the bond, if I understand the, the numbers correctly. This 2.2, this 2.38, 2 million, $38,000, that's actually the cost that, you know, that, that we were talking about sending back to the budget. I'm talking about the money that we got from the state. And we got 343,000 from the state, and we got 1.4, I think it was like 1.4 million, if I'm correct, from the government, from Pennsylvania for the reimbursement of the machines. That's the money that should go back to the bond. If we don't have the money because we spent some money on some other, we knew the expense was coming, we should have borrowed accordingly. But for us to tell the people that we were gonna put that money back on the bond, and now sit back and say we only have 600,000, yet last meeting we just transferred like 3 million dollars to the reserve account, plus we put money in the capital plan. I mean, it's, it's just disingenuous to the people. I mean, we've already put 3 million dollars in the savings account. Most people in this county don't have 10 cents in the savings account. We put 2 million dollars in the, in the capital plan, if I remember my numbers last meeting. We put that money in the capital plan because we have an overage.
It was more like 400, 500,000, Mr. Griffith.
Oh, you're right, yes, thank you for the correction, yes, it was 500,000 for the capital plan. So we transferred probably almost 400, or 4 million dollars last time, last meeting. And, I mean, and now we're gonna tell the people, we're not gonna put 1.4 million dollars down on the bond that we told you we were gonna put down because we spent it on something else. That's basically what we're saying. I mean, we bought the machines, and, and because we didn't figure right in our purchasing, we don't have the money to put back on the bond that we told you we would do when we got the money back from the state. I think we need to put the money back that we got from the state, whatever that number is, pay it on the bond. That's what was said. And if you need the money, take it from the 3 million dollars that we just transferred into a savings account.
Anyone else?
Mr. McGinley, if I could be heard real quick?
Mr. Pedri, go ahead.
Listen, there's, there's a lot of discussion about what was said at that last meeting. I would just defer everybody to listen to the actual recordings of what was actually said at the meeting. I think Mr. Swetz clearly presented the information. We needed 3.4 for the complete purchase of these machines, we got 3.2. And this is the issue that we have here, there's no leftover money, there's no, you know, a benefit for anything along those lines. I would like to pay down the debt like everybody else, but we're still paying back on the, on the machines is where we're at. I would just defer to the actual recordings, as opposed to the recollections of people, what they said. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Mr. McGinley, it's Sheila.
Go ahead, Saven.
I would like to defer to Brian Swetz. I think that we have an expert in this area, the Financial Management Group. Neither, none of us here on council have that expertise. And I don't understand why with our lawyers, we don't follow their legal opinions, and with our financials, we don't file, follow their opinions. I, I just don't understand it. I'm gonna go with what Brian said.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I just wanna jump in, one, one quick comment. I just wanna say one thing, that some of us went back and listened to the recording from December of 2019, you know, and listened to the words that came out of county management's mouth. I mean, it's either, it's either they're misleading us as council or as a body, or that council at the time, and says one thing back then, and wanna do, do something totally different now with a different body of government at hand. You know, there's different individuals that are sitting in these seats today. But some of us actually went back and listened to the recording of December 2019. I think Mr. Griffith and myself included. You know, maybe you need to go back and listen to those recordings because what comes out of people's mouth is not always what happens in the future.
Okay. I would also say to Mr. Urban that I have listened to him and also read the transcripts. Anyone else?
Yeah, if I could, Mr. Chair?
Certainly.
Yeah, well, Councilman Gergen, thanks for the transcript of that, me and the Councilman Urban was talking about. I didn't realize what a gasbag I was talking there, or my written comments there. But we, we really were, we really were serious about paying down the debt, and that really was the original intention. It's, it's plain as day. Thank you.
Alright. We're voting now to adopt the ordinance. We have a motion from Mr. Urban, and seconded by Mr. Griffith to, to adopt the ordinance. If you vote yes, the ordinance is adopted. If you vote no, the ordinance fails. Roll call, please.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes to the ordinance.
You did say yes, correct?
Yes, yes.
Mr. Hough?
Yes.
Ms. Hough?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Radell?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
No.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
No.
Mr. McGinley?
No.
3 no, 8 yes.
Motion carries. Moving down to number two. Motion to introduce an ordinance amending the 2021 fiscal year budget for Luzerne County. And this is the hospitality grant. This is, would be an introduction of a ordinance, so requires four votes to move forward. Do we have a motion?
Presented, Schnee.
Mr. Schnee, do we have a second?
Second, Kendra.
Step.
Ms. Radell? On the question? Roll call.
Mr. Hough?
Yes.
Ms. Hough?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Radell?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Motion is introduced. Moving down to number three. Motion to introduce an ordinance amending the 2021 fiscal year budget for Luzerne County. CTCL related to the elections. Do we have a motion?
So moved, Walter.
Mr. Griffith, do we have a second for Mr. Griffith?
Second, Leanne.
Sheila left second.
Well, Ms. McDermott is in there. Question? This would be an introduction, you need four votes to introduce the ordinance. Roll call, please.
Ms. Hough?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Radell?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
I'm gonna abstain, I think this is actually a Board of Elections issue before it comes to council.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Mr. Griffith?
I agree with Mr. Urban, I don't think we should be voting on this until the Board of Election convenes to decide if they wanna use that money for whatever they're gonna use it for.
So what's your vote, Mr. Griffith?
I, I'm sorry, uh, no.
Thank you.
Mr. Hough?
He has to introduce.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
9 yes, 1 no, 1 extension.
Thank you. Moving down to number four, motion to introduce ordinance amending the 2021 fiscal year budget for Luzerne County. And this is for the District Attorney's Office, do we have a motion?
So moved, Walter.
Mr. Griffith, do we have a second?
Second, Urban.
Mr. Urban? On the question? Ms. Alvanis is still with us, I believe. Roll call, please.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Radell?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Hough?
Yes.
Ms. Hough?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Thank you. Moving down to number five. Motion to adopt an ordinance, adopting Luzerne County zoning ordinance of 2021, and the Luzerne County zoning map of 2021. And this was a public hearing that was held before the voting session this evening, do we have a motion?
So moved, Leanne.
Ms. McDermott, do we have a second?
Second, Kendra.
Ms. Radell? On the question?
On the question, Mr. McGinley, could I ask Mr. O'Neill if he's available?
Mr. O'Neill or Mr. Jones?
Uh, Mr. Jones is fine.
Okay, Mr. Jones, I think he was on, I didn't, I don't know if Mr. O'Neill was on. Mr. Jones?
I am available.
Go ahead, Mr. Griffith, you had a question?
Sure, thank you. Mr. Jones, could you just tell me, and I don't know the answer to this, that's a, a kind of questioning. We have like, I think it's 22 people that are, are 22 municipalities that are part of our zoning, follow our zoning laws and, and zoning and planning. Do we charge them a fee, those municipalities, for their service every year regarding us administering their zoning? Because if they had their own zoning officer, that would be an expense to the municipalities, correct? So are we charging them a fee annually for administering their zoning laws?
There are 21, there, there was 22 municipalities recently, very recently. The Borough of Luzerne passed their own zoning ordinance, and so they dropped off our list. And there are now currently 21 municipalities that we serve in this capacity at the county level. The answer to your second question is that, no, we happen to not charge the municipalities for these services.
And, and so my, my question to you is, if they had to have, if these 21 municipalities would have had to go out and hire a zoning officer and do all the work that these other, we have 76 municipalities, so you're looking at like 50, 55 other municipalities possibly that don't have, that have their own zoning officers, and they pay that cost. Is there, is there any reason why we aren't charging those other municipalities a fee for us administering their zoning laws?
I can't speak subjectively to your, to the, to what you're implying, but I can say that your portrayal of our not charging those municipalities, your, your, your acknowledging that is correct, we do not charge them. And if they were to hire their own zoning ordinance officer, it would be an expense that they would need to incur for themselves if they wanted to administer their own zoning, yes.
So legis, legislatively possibly, we could take that up legislatively to try and eliminate or help in that regard to... I mean, I'm not, I'm not thinking that municipalities are flush with money, that's not my intent. But there's obviously some cost to the county for you guys to, the zoning and planning office to do the work of administering all of that. And, and it's, I, I, it's sort of like the issue that we have with the state police in Pennsylvania, where some municipalities don't have a police department, they just use the state police. And they don't get charged for that service. It's kind of on the same idea that I'm talking about this with the zoning is. And I, and I don't think it should be an exorbitant fee, but I think there should be some cost incurred by municipalities if they so choose to use your office to, or the county office, I should say, to administer their zoning laws and make you guys do the, the work of having public hearings. That's, that's an extra expense to the county. So I'm just concerned, maybe that's something we could take up as a legislative committee, or, or maybe put it in the administrative code, but I think it's something maybe council should address. Your thoughts on that?
If I may, counsel, this is Jim Weber, Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
The 21 municipalities now that are under the, the county ordinance don't collect any fees either for permits or hearings, or variance approvals, or rezoning applications. So they're not getting any of those fees where we, the county does get those fees. That's what, that, those municipalities are being charged, if you will.
So, so I guess that's kind of the trade-
Residents are paying the county for that service and not their own municipality.
So that's kind of the trade-off, I assume, right?
That's correct, sir.
Okay, is it, is it, in your opinion-
Those fees do, those fees do help us as a county government defray the costs involved in administering the program.
Yeah, in your opinion, you think we're getting enough in, to defray what you guys do for those 21 municipalities? Or do you think there should be a, a fee of some sort added to what you get? I mean, some municipalities obviously don't, we don't get any fees from, right? Because if there's no act-
I mean, like, if, if I could just jump in here, this is Dave Pedry. Listen, I mean, like, you're asking for-
Listen, I mean, like you're asking for, you know, our, our county staff to provide a, uh, really an idea for county council. That's really your decision, county council, if you believe that, that we're not getting what we should be doing here. It's our job to, to do whatever you would like to do. And I don't think Mr. Jones's opinion, I mean, obviously he'd be happy to provide whatever opinion you wanted to do, but at the end of the day, it's gonna be your policy that we're, we're gonna follow.
Okay, that's, that's fair enough. So something maybe we should look into. Thank you so much.
Mr. Griffith, in addition, uh, the reason why the, the proposed ordinance does allow for fees to be set by resolution is so that council may do such an analysis at whatever point in the future it chooses to, and adjust fees without having to go through the entire ordinance amendment process.
Okay.
That's the reason why it's in there, so that council may make those decisions going forward.
Okay, well, that's, that's helpful information. Thank you so much.
That's why it was separated out. I think, uh, Mr. Jones made that point way back, I mean, when we started talking about the zoning and bringing it up to date. Okay, we have a motion by Mr. McDermott, second by Ms. Radel to, uh, adopt the ordinance as presented. Roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Radel?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Very good. Now we're going down to number six, and this is where, uh, the fees could be adjusted. And since it's in a resolution, we would not have to go through the ordinance process to make those adjustments. So do we have a motion to adopt the zoning fee schedule by resolution?
Presented, Sheila.
Second, Walter.
Second?
Walter.
Mr. Griffith? On the question?
I just have one question, Mr. Chair.
Sure, go ahead.
So have, have the fees dramatically increased or are they, are they pretty standard from the last time, um, they were amended? For Mr. Jones, if you could answer that real quickly.
The fees change in almost no way from the current version to the newly proposed version. The only change at all has to do with above-ground pools and it's fairly negligible. In the current ordinance, there is a blanket fee for all above-ground pool permits. In the new ordinance, it would be on a sliding scale between $45 and $60 based on the square footage size of the above-ground pools. All of the other fees for various permits would remain the same.
Very good, thank you, sir.
Mr. Haas, if I may again, uh, to answer your, your specific question, I believe the last time fees were adjusted was 2013. After the, uh, change to home rule and the, uh, prior change to the floodplain regulations.
Very good, thank you.
Okay, roll call, please.
Ms. Radel?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Thank you. Moving down to number seven. Motion to adopt a resolution authorizing the county manager to amend and extend the lease agreement between Luzerne County and the United States government for the marine facility located at 1118 Wyoming Avenue, Wyoming. Pennsylvania 18644. We have a motion.
So moved, Kendra.
Ms. Regal, do we have a second?
Second, Leanne.
Ms. McDermott? On the question? Roll call.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes. Yes.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Radel?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Thank you.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
This is Dave, this is Dave Pedry. Before, before we move to the county council things, can I just ask for a clarification on, on the first ordinance that was passed tonight for the debt service? I just wanna be clear, um, because there was some discussion, I wasn't clear. I, I, council passed that ordinance and we're gonna put the money on the debt service as council chose. Brian Swett says we have, we have $600,000 available. Is the $600,000 what we're moving? Because the ordinance currently says 2 million in, in one section, but then Brian says 600,000. I don't know what council's intentions are. Um, and I, I don't know if I should fall for reconsideration or what the next steps are. I just wanna clarification, that's what we're doing now. I'm happy to put whatever money you guys wanna put on the debt service on the debt service.
Okay.
But like, I just wanna know the number.
Uh, Ms. Crocomall and Mr. DeLuca, please. If you look at the agenda item for number one on the agenda. The dollar amount. Is in the fourth paragraph. $2,38,405.49 to be utilized to pay down the Luzerne County debt service. You heard the manager's question? What is the legal interpretation, Ms. Crocomall or Mr. DeLuca?
Well, I think it's pretty clear that, that says $2 million. I just, Mr. Swett said we only have 600,000 available.
Yes, I heard that, but I think we need a, you solicitor to weigh, weigh in on this.
What was, well, what did council, what amount did council vote on?
We voted on the ordinance, we didn't change the amounts.
Well, then the amounts are the amounts.
Okay.
Okay, I just wanna be, I, I just, I, I thought maybe I missed it. Cause I, all right, well then, we'll, we'll review and I'll get back to council about what the next steps will be.
Very good.
Wait, this is Leanne McDermott. Um, I would actually like to change my vote on that, on the 2 million, so I don't know how to-
Uh, at this point, the votes have been cast and reported, so we're, we're not gonna be able to change the mo, the votes. So I don't think one vote would change the outcome of that particular ordinance. Manager Pedry has asked for clarification, which I think he now has. He has some alternatives if he wishes to, to, uh, move to another step, so, uh-
Yeah, Mr. McGinley, I don't know if it would make a, it's, it's Kendra. I don't know if it would make a difference, but I'd be, uh, if, if we could change the way that that was voted on, because I was voting on the, the 2 million, but if it's 600,000, then I, I would like to reconsider my vote as well.
You have to ask a reconsideration by someone who voted on the prevailing side. So if they want to do a reconsideration, let one of them make a motion to reconsider it now.
Motion to reconsider, Kendra.
Okay, Kendra, you're gonna make the motion reconsider. Do we have a second for Ms. Radel?
Second.
Second.
Uh, who was the first one there?
Leanne.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Okay, so we have a motion for reconsideration going back to number one. And the reconsideration would be what, Ms. Radel? What do you want to reconsider in that ordinance?
Well, I would just like to reconsider the way that I voted, because I was basing it off of what the ordinance said and not off of the amount that, um, Mr. Swett gave us, so, I mean-
So do you want to reconsider the amount of money that was stated in the ordinance?
Yes.
Okay, and you would like to go with the amount of money that Mr. Swett said was available?
Well, I, I, I'm unsure, Mr. McGinley. I just want clarification on what the correct amount is.
Yes, and we're gonna ask Mr. Swett now.
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Swett's?
So the amount in, the amount available is 613,964.69. That's the money we have available.
64.69.
Correct.
And so instead of the 2,384,0549, the amount that you're suggesting, Mr. Swett, is 6,000, 613,964.69, correct?
Correct, Mr. Chair.
Ms. Radel?
Question.
Go ahead.
I have a question, though.
Go ahead.
I have a, I have a que, this is Sharon, I'm sorry. Do we reconsider it just to bring it back and then once it's back, we make amendments? Or is this all going to be done at once?
We have to have a vote on the reconsideration first.
Right, you have to vote to reconsider.
Okay, let's do that first. Everybody understand what's, we're reconsidering the vote that we had on the ordinance that was number one on our agenda. And we have a motion for Ms. Radel, second by Ms. McDermott, to do that reconsideration, since they were, uh, two people who voted on the majority side for that particular agenda item.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley, question?
Yes, sir.
Do the only people that vote on the reconsideration are the people that are thinking, like, if you believe you voted correctly-
Everybody votes.
Everyone votes.
Okay.
11 votes, potentially. Everybody has, has a vote on this reconsideration, okay? Everybody clear on that? Any other classifications or discussion?
Uh, I got a clarification, so why, why was the move to reconsider made?
They want to change their votes, apparently.
They wanna change their vote on the-
Or something about it.
On the first item.
That's why it was-
I, I, I wanted, I mean, it began with some council members, why did they wanna, why did they wanna move? Can I get clarification on that?
Well, the, the explanation by Mr. Swett for the full 2 million going into the debt service, um, you know, again, I, I would agree with just the 613,000, leaving extra money into the reserve for the maintenance.
No, this money, I, I wanna be, I wanna be clear, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, that's fine.
Well, the first thing is, we have to vote on the reconsideration.
Correct.
Mr. Haas had a question, and I think, uh, Mr. Haas's question was, the $2 million is the, is the issue? And I think other people are looking at the $613,000 instead of $2 million, and that's why we're going back to the reconsideration. If we have a positive vote on the reconsideration, then we can have an amendment to the ordinance, and that will be voted on. Okay?
Call the question on reconsideration.
Go ahead.
No, I said call the question.
Okay, call the question, I'm sorry.
Second.
Very good. So we have a motion for reconsideration by Ms. Radel, second by Ms. McDermott. Roll call, please.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
No.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Mr. Griffith?
No.
Mr. Haas?
Absolutely not.
Ms. Ha, Ms. Howe?
No.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Radel?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Seven yes, four no.
Okay, so now we're gonna reconsider the ordinance. We have, uh, someone would like to make an amendment.
Can you have a question first, Mr. McGinley?
Well, we should get a motion and a second, then we can have a question, I'm sure. All right? Do we have an amendment?
Presented, Schnee.
What's, what are you presenting, Mr. Schnee? What, what's your amendment?
I'm presenting 600 and some thousand dollars.
Okay, 613,964.69, Mr. Schnee? Do we have a second for Mr. Schnee?
Second, Leanne.
Ms. McDermott? Okay, now question. Ms. Sedman?
Yes, I have a question for Mr. Swett. Uh, Mr. Swett is, do, are you comfortable as budget and finance in doing the, in putting in the 600,000?
I don't think it's really relevant. I made my opinion and council voted, uh, the 613,000 is all we have. So, again, the 2 million, the 2 million was the state and the federal reimbursement, and some of that was used to pay for the machines. So the 613,964.69 is what we have.
Right, this is, and I'll be clear to county council, that, that, we received the money from the state that we, that we, that, this was budgeted by council to pay for the machines. We took that money, we paid for the machines. There's currently $600,000 left over that we are going to utilize to pay for the ongoing maintenance. Council has decided to take that money and put it onto the debt service as opposed to paying it for the ongoing maintenance. So if council takes the 613,000, we'll pay the debt service. Great, I'm fine with that, that's good. We'll have to come back to county council with a budget amendment later on or make other decisions to say how are we gonna pay this year's, this year's debt service? I know, we don't think you should move it at all, but if council decides they would like to move money to pay off a portion of debt service, we're good with that. We're just gonna, we're just, but we don't have 2 million. We have 613,000, is really all we're trying to say.
Mr. McGinley, it's Kendra. Can I, can I say a question, uh, say, make a comment and kind of ask a question? So essentially, I voted yes to the 2 million towards the debt service, because 2 million is a significant amount to put towards the debt service. So when I voted to reconsider, it was not to make an amendment to correct it to the 600,000. It was specifically to not put 600,000 towards the debt service, because that, like, it makes more sense to keep it there for that maintenance. If it was 2 million going toward the debt service, that's a significant amount. But now we're amending it to the 600,000, but, but now I don't wanna put 600,000 towards the debt service, if that makes sense. So I don't know, so when I made the motion to reconsider, that's kind of what I was getting at, not just to make the amendment.
Okay.
If anyone else-
Do we have an amendment on the floor? With 613,964.69 by Mr. Schnee, second by Ms. McDermott. I think everybody's clear on your stance, uh, Ms. Radel. But that's the amendment that we're considering at this point.
I, I missed it.
I was gonna say, can, if I take back my second, can we just go back to none of the money going into the debt service?
You take back your second, that's fine, then we have, we'll request a second for Mr. Schnee. If there's no second, then there's no amendment proposed. Are you taking back your amendment, your, your second, Ms. McDermott?
Can we, if we withdraw that, can we go back to not putting anything into debt service? Like go back to-
Well, then you would vote down the ordinance, I believe.
Correct.
And you just take a vote on the ordinance as it stands and vote yes or no?
I'll go down.
That's what I would prefer.
Okay, are you withdrawing your second?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee, are you withdrawing your amendment?
Yes.
Okay, we don't have an amendment on the floor. We had a reconsideration. So as a result of that reconsiderate, reconsideration vote, which was an affirmative, we're not gonna go back to the ordinance. The ordinance does contain 2,38,405.49 in the body of the ordinance. So if you vote for the ordinance, that 2 million will be transferred. You vote no, the 2 million is not transferred.
On the question?
On the question, go ahead.
On the question. I think, I, I really think the council members need to reconsider what they're thinking about here with this ordinance. There was a statement made that we were gonna pay back the debt with the money that was left over from that bond when we got reimbursed from the state. That comes to 2 million. If we don't have the 2 million, that's not an excuse for us not to pay back the money. If we spend it, that's our fault. We should have put the money somewhere else. If we didn't budget properly, we were told we were gonna get 2 million from the state. We got 1.4 or 1.6 plus the 300,000. Whatever we got back from the state as reimbursement was supposed to go to the bond. That's what council said last year. Whether that, that is in the transcript or not, that is- Whether that, that is in the transcript or not, that is what council alluded the people last year. So, this council could do, this council can do whatever they wish. But I will tell you that they told the, the people of this county that they were going to pay that money back. So, you do what you want.
That was two thousand nineteen, though, not, not twenty twenty.
I will vote accordingly, it's no problem for me.
Ms. Seidman, you, you want to speak?
Yes, um, I know Walter's the voice of the people, and that's a great thing, but I look at, I don't think you can necessarily separate your service agreement from the cost of the machines. I see that as one. And that's why I voted no in the beginning, because we did not have the money without borrowing.
Okay.
And just to re- that, that was two thousand nineteen, though, not, not last year, that was decided in two thousand nineteen, not twenty twenty.
You're correct, Ms. McDermott. Mr. DeLuca? Uh, Ms. Kokomo, do we, do we need a motion to, to, uh, finalize the ordinance? Now that we had a reconsideration vote?
You just take it for a vote now, right?
Revote.
Nobody made an amendment?
Right.
So you're voting on the ordinance?
We're voting on the ordinance, which means that everything that's in the ordinance, you vote yes, that stays.
And Ms. McGinley-
You vote no, the ordinance does not pass, and there's no money moved. Okay?
Ms. McGinley, I'd like to make a comment before we vote.
Go ahead, Mr. Urban.
I just want to say, you know, like, it, it's pretty much shame on the office of, of budget and finance, because obviously, you know, if you have a maintenance agreement in any department, in any line item, anywhere, at any time, you should know about it in the future. You know, and, and budget appropriately in the future, you know, for that item, no matter what it is, whether it's a hundred and ninety thousand, ten dollars, twenty dollars, copy machines, voting machines. You know, there's maintenance probably on a lot of different items within the county, and you, you should budget appropriately. So, you know, I think, you know, to, to spring this maintenance on us all of a sudden, I think is disingenuous by the office of budget and finance. You know, quite honestly, we probably should have budgeted in twenty twenty, um, for twenty twenty-one, and, and all of a sudden now county management says, oh, we don't have the money, we need this money, the six hundred thousand dollars for future years. I mean, I think that's very disingenuous on county management's part, too. I mean, I, I quite honestly think that, you know, we're, we're playing a shell game with the people's money and taxpayers' money and tax dollars. You know, quite honestly, uh, you know, one council did state that they were going to pay back part of the machine costs through the reimbursement process. And now this council want to, they want to take, obviously, make their own mind, that's fine. You know, my colleagues can make, make their own mind up and however they choose to, to, to disperse this money, but I think, you know, there's a lot of fuzzy math going on with the budget and finance department. Uh, it causes extra confusion, and quite honestly, you know, I, I've never been quite happy with Mr. Swets's performance, and I think he should resign because I don't think he knows how to do accounting properly.
Whoa, 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 Mr. Urban. That's, uh-
I have an opinion, and that's my, my opinion.
That's fine, you can have an opinion, but please, uh, you know, there's certain parameters there that we should adhere to. Anyone else? Mr. Swets, do, do you have a comment?
I did, the agenda submitted was for the full three point six million, that's what the two thousand nineteen council approved. Whatever this council approves, we'll do, as the manager said. We just brought to council's attention that the original action was more than the cash we had. We're not trying to influence council, we've always done what the council said. So the, the, that's why I attached the five pages of the ordinance that said, it didn't segregate the two point eight million and the eight hundred thousand. Mr. Parsnick's two thousand nineteen agenda submitted, which is in your packet, shows the three point six million.
Okay. Any other questions?
Just a comment, Mr. Chair, if I may, Harry Haas.
Go ahead, Mr. Haas.
You know, thanks, Sheila, for being consistent and for not being coerced, you know what I mean? Like, this is a total betrayal. We are supposed to pay down debt, we're supposed to do what we set out to do. It's just plain as day. If you all did your homework, you read the, you read the transcript, you listened to tapes, that's what it said to do. You gotta be kidding me. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Are we ready? Again, if you vote yes, the ordinance is in, will pass and be in effect. You vote no, the ordinance does not pass, and there'll be no change of any monies. Roll call, please.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
Still no.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Houck?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
No.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Radell?
No.
Ms. Edman?
No.
Mr. Schnee?
No.
Mr. McGinley?
No.
Five yes, six no.
Ordinance fails. We're back to the agenda items. We're at number eight. Motion to adopt a resolution declaring a vacancy in the Luzerne County Cares Commission. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Who's that?
Urban.
Mr. Haas?
Urban.
Mr. Urban, excuse me, th- sorry. Second?
Second, Walter.
Mr. Griffith? Okay, uh, in regards to this, uh, resolution, Office of Law, do you want to speak in that regard?
Um, well, I mean, I, Mr. Griffith, uh, is suggested this, uh, because he is reading it as the charter requires uh, that no council member serve on any commission. Um, when the Office of Law reviewed the, uh, original creation of this, uh, of this, uh, board, or commission, whatever you want to call it, committee, we made the determination that the functions of this body were, were not at all, uh, what, uh, would support creation of a commission. And, um, you know, it's unfortunate, it's called a commission, I guess my suggestion would be, uh, instead of eliminating this, uh, this body that has, uh, uh, the intention to do good things for the community, um, with the participation of council members and members of the community, um, with no policymaking ability, with no ability, uh, to, uh, uh, control any money. Um, my suggestion would be that you remove the word "commission" uh, from the, uh, name. Uh, not to remove members of it, I, I don't see how that would, I don't believe that's necessary.
Okay. Other members?
Mr. McGinley, I would like to say something.
Who's that?
Vog.
Yes, go ahead, Ms. Roll.
So, um, I think everyone knows my only goal is to help people in need. Um, if the majority of council thinks that this is a charter violation, I will gladly adjust, but let's be honest, that's not the case. Um, this is one man's opinion, and it's a personal vendetta against me, and that's all it is, retaliation resolutions for what happened last week. Um, you, Mr. Griffith, you're not gaining one up on me by the, doing this, um, you're not going to make me look bad. Um, like I said, it's retaliation. Uh, so let's call it to a vote and see what everyone thinks. And let's move on.
Mr. McGinley?
Ms. Houck?
Yep, um, it, I, um, I've had, I had questions about this that I raised when we formed the commission, and I think, um, the differences between the big C commission, um, that would be established with the charter and a small C commission that would be like a committee, uh, like an ad hoc committee of council. And, uh, certainly, um, one of them would, would not be open to council member involvement, but I think I've said in emails that even Mr. Griffith quoted last week that, um, I believe that we have been treating this as an ad hoc council commission. Um, and whether you call it committee or commission doesn't really matter, but I think it's, it's being treated as an arm of the council, not as, um, an official ABC of the county. Um, and I think we just need to really clearly define which it is. Because if it, if it is a, an official ABC of the county, then, um, I think there is an issue with council members serving as, um, you know, as chair or a voting member on it, but if it's an arm of the council, um, such as the Election Inquiry Committee, uh, Blight of Property Review, um, there's another way to handle it, and we have council committees or commissions that can have public involvement, and I, it, I really think that that's what this is. I think it's a, it's an arm of the council, we treat it as an ad hoc committee, we get a report on it once a month, um, just as we do with the other committees of council, like budget and finance and, and all the rest of them, um, we just have citizen involvement in it. Um, I don't see, um, the point to removing people, um, um, but I do see the point to defining um, exactly what the, uh, what kind of commission we're talking about here.
And if I just may follow up, uh, uh, from what Councilwoman Houck said and Attorney, uh, DeLuca, uh, there also needs to be some, uh, clarification in the administrative code, I think it's, uh, two point oh nine, Vito, I don't have my notes in front of me. Uh, but it, 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 it calls for the creation of committees and commissions. And I think, uh, I think the intent was, uh, for a small C commission, not a, 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 a capital C commission, something like, you know, the Pennsylvania Utility Commission. Uh, but, uh, uh, I think Attorney DeLuca really spoke to the functioning of, uh, this, uh, commission. Uh, it's going to function the same way, uh, whether you use the term committee or commission. But, uh, I will request, uh, with the, uh, Code Review Committee, uh, that we get some clarification, because when this was all uh, being, uh, formulated, uh, that section, uh, really, uh, influenced the outcome of creating a commission, or, 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 uh, or, uh, the ability to create a commission, a small C commission.
Anyone else?
Mr. McGinley, Steve?
Go ahead.
Um, when this commission was formed, it was actually an act of council by ordinance, which then becomes county code. So therefore, it is actually by inherently just a big C at this point. Um, I did question at the time about the membership on this particular commission. And you cannot, I mean, typically, when you form a commission by the authority of council, you should define the membership within the ordinance ahead of time, and not in the bylaws after the fact. You know, this way, there is no question about membership. But because this was an ordinance, it was passed by council, um, and has members of council sitting on this commission, because it's not a committee by definition at this point. It does violate the charter, you know, at this point in time, the way it, it is written. Um, it's ABC's commission, so, you know, you want to mince words, you want to slice and dice the charter in fifteen thousand different ways, and it, it's all selective interpretation. But, at the end of the day, it was an act of council, it is the law of Luzerne County at the moment. And there was no defined membership within the original ordinance, which I did question at the time. And then, so we basically said, well, we'll worry about it later, and then you pass bylaws later on, uh, around this commission, but regardless, it, it did not have any membership stated in the ti- at the time. And I do believe that it violates the charter or the spirit of the charter, and I think, you know, we need to either clean it up or, or boot the members off the board, or off the commission, sorry.
Um, Mr. Haas, Mr. Chair, if I could, uh, answer, uh, this, this situation, and this is embarrassing, actually, to have a discussion about, uh, County Cares Commission that clearly was formed with absolutely no intention at all to transfer any policymaking or other authority from county council as a governing body. And to compare that in any way, shape, or form to the clear language of the charter that was violated, uh, by the election board and what happened with the election board, it's extremely unfortunate, and that the comparison isn't even close. Uh, we, Ramilda and I and Shannon have had discussions, uh, uh, over the past week since we saw uh, that this, uh, motion now to, to somehow punish the, the County Cares Commission by removing members, uh, because of what happened with the election board. And we've had discussions about it, and we could sit here and debate with, with everyone about what the charter says, what the administrative code says, what the legal definition of a commission is versus, uh, versus an authority or in a board or a committee. But, but to even have that discussion is, is giving credibility to this action. And at this point, this is clearly not a commission, the type of commission that was intended by the charter to, uh, limit, uh, participation by county council members. And I don't, we could have continuing discussion, I'll answer any questions about the, what the charter says. But the, the fact is that the question regarding the election board was absolutely clear-cut and dried, without any, uh, gray area. This one, it's called a commission, but it's really not a commission, and I get that, but you have to look at the function of this body that was created, and the function of this body clearly is not, uh, uh, the type of commission, uh, that would have any authority from Luzerne County Council.
Anyone else?
Mr. McGinley?
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Um, uh, first of all, I take offense to Mr. DeLuca's insinuation that this is retaliation in any way. This is not that at all, for me or for anybody else. Mr. Vog, Mr. Mr. Vog knows full well, I've been at those committee meetings, I appreciate the work they do, I've never, ever once disparaged what they do at all on that committee or that commission. I'm concerned about, we're all not going to live forever here. Somebody else could go back and look at this and say, why are there elected officials on a commission? This commission was created by ordinance, I get the fact that when it was created, it probably should have been created as a committee. I understand all of that, I understand it all. What's embarrassing is the Office of Law sat there and let it happen, that's embarrassing. That's very embarrassing. They sat there and watched an ordinance come across the table, not once, three times, and never said a word that you can't do this by ordinance because the charter says you can't do it by ordinance unless you're going to create a commission.
That doesn't say that, Mr. Griffith, that doesn't say that.
Mr. DeLuca, I'm speaking, I'm speaking, Mr. DeLuca. And I would expect, and I would expect a little bit more respect from people of the Office of Law to even impugn the fact that this is all about insinuation, that I'm against this thing because of the, what happened with the election board. That's not true at all. This charter is crystal clear. And if we're going to go northbound on a southbound lane, that's fine, we're going to use that excuse, fine, but let's read the charter for what it is. This commission was created by ordinance, that makes it a commission of this code. You can take it and twist it any way you want. You created this commission by ordinance, that makes it a commission under the charter. The charter says any commission created in this charter cannot have elected officials on there. This is, has nothing to do with the great work that the County Cares Commission does, has nothing to do with anything else. It has everything to do with the ability for us to be crystal clear in our charter language that says elected officials can't sit on a commission. There's no word committee in our charter anywhere, nowhere. So if we want to have a committee, we have the way to do that. In our bylaws, we create committees all the time. Mr. McGinley names the people for that committee, there's not a problem with that. But for us to sit back and say that the ordinance that was created, to create a County Cares Commission is not a violation of this charter by having elected officials on there, is certainly incorrect. Because it is, it was created by ordinance, just like eight oh one says, it was created by ordinance. If we don't want it that way, I don't have a problem, just let's fix it. So that down the road, somebody doesn't come out and say, well, why do you have elected officials on the commission, but you can't have elected officials on something else? You want to have ad hoc committees on a commission, that's fine, let's have ad hoc committees on a board of elections or any other commission or board, it doesn't matter. So, that's the problem that I have here, is we want to be clear, and this is clearly a violation of the charter, whether it's a big C or little C, that, it, our charter is clear about commissions. It doesn't matter what, what function they do, it doesn't say if they're a non, uh, voting function, or if they do ministerial work, or, it doesn't say any of that. So let's be clear about what the charter clearly says, and it says a commission can't have elected officials on it. I, I don't want the com- County Cares Commission disbanded, I don't want that at all. I want them to stay in place, I think they do great things. But I think they need to be called what they actually are and do the functions that they- But I think they need to be called what they actually are and do the functions that they can do. I don't have a problem with what they do, but I do have a problem with elected officials sitting on a commission in violation of the charter. That's my point of the resolution. I don't expect to have them booted off. If you want to amend the ordinance, we can bring an ordinance next time to amend that ordinance. But it is what it is.
Mr. McGinley, could I respond? First of all, Mr. Griffith, let me just say this. First of all, you continuously bash the Office of Law and the professionals in that office, and that's fine. You have every right to do that. But as soon as you're called out for something, a decision that you're making or some reading of the law that doesn't agree with anything the hundreds of years of legal experience we have in our office opine on or even your colleagues on this very council, that's when you have problems. You didn't like what happened last week at the election board, and that's why you brought up the County Cares. Let's call it what we're calling it. That's exactly why you brought up removing people from County Care. And the reality is, we reviewed that when it came across our desk. We reviewed the functions of that body that was being created, and we determined that it was not a violation of the charter to have county council members sit on it. Now, you disagree. You disagree with no legal education at all. You don't have a law degree. You aren't licensed. Bring me the opinion of one attorney, and it doesn't even have to be a good attorney. It could be the worst licensed attorney in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. Bring me the opinion of a licensed attorney that agrees with you on this matter or any of the other matters that you have gone in public. And you just recently went in public to a meeting for a township and talked about how the Luzerne County Office of Law, which was created by our charter, continuously gives bad opinions. Now, your definition of bad opinions is when our opinion doesn't agree with your opinion. That's your definition of bad opinions. So I'm just going to say, we don't have to sit here and take your continuous abuse anymore than you should take anyone else's abuse. And I did not mean to abuse you. I'm calling this what it is. You're bringing this motion up. You didn't bring it up at last meeting, Mr. Griffith.
I brought it up before, Mr. DeLuca.
You didn't bring it up two or three meetings ago.
I brought it up many times before.
You brought it up the meeting right after county council voted to vacate positions on the election board.
You're absolutely incorrect, Mr. DeLuca. You go back and look at the minutes. I brought this issue up before.
Yeah, but I don't see a resolution on any of the previous meetings.
Okay.
Agenda.
Mr. DeLuca, please.
Okay, yeah, right.
Call the question, Mr. Chairman.
Actually, I have one more comment, Tim.
Very quickly, Mr. Urban, and then we're going to go to the question.
Like, quite honestly, this is the reason we need, I think, our own attorney, because you have an attorney that's supposed to work for the entire county, and they take an adversarial role whenever they disagree with the council member from a legal perspective. Your job as an attorney is to represent your client to the best of your abilities, and that client includes county council. You know, we have opinions, and you know, you're taking the side of certain members of council or certain members of management. And this is where the adversarial role comes into play with, you know, if we had such great attorneys, we wouldn't be constantly coming out here and voting on lawsuits that are brought forward to us as council because you're not protecting the liability of this county. All right? And we know what we're talking about. We're going to be faced with some lawsuits very soon that are going to be pretty extensive, and that's because we get attorneys in the office that obviously cost us money.
Okay.
And quite honestly, I think we need to actually just repeal the ordinance, and if you want to create an ad hoc committee, that's fine. I'll make a motion to repeal ordinance 2020-03.
You're not making that motion because we don't have the on agenda and it's not written. We're on the motion to adopt the resolution. We have a motion from Mr. Urban, second for Mr. Griffith. Roll call, please.
Mr. Vog.
No.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
I think you're muted, Mr. Haas.
Sorry about that, yes.
Ms. Haug?
No.
Mr. Urban?
No.
Mr. Perry?
Nope.
Ms. Radel?
No.
Ms. Sedman?
No.
Mr. Schnee?
No.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
No.
Three yes, eight no.
Thank you. Motion fails. Moving down to number nine, motion to adopt the resolution to declare a vacancy on the Luzerne County Blighted Property Review Committee. We have a motion.
Present it, Schnee.
Mr. Schnee, do we have a second for Mr. Schnee?
Second, Perry.
Mr. Haas. No, no, Mr. Perry, right?
Yep.
Sorry. On the question?
Question, Mr. McGinley.
Yes.
Is the only reason that Harry can stay as chairman on this and have public is it because it's not called a commission, because it's called a blighted property committee? I just want to understand that.
If I could, Mr. Chair?
Absolutely. Go ahead.
Yeah, it's actually, Sheila, it has to take place because of the Pennsylvania redevelopment law passed decades and decades ago, so it's a necessary function for the process to take place through the redevelopment authority. So it is a committee.
Okay.
Right? And the membership was defined by that, I believe, right, Mr. Haas?
That is correct.
Because it has to have a member of the legislative body on it.
I have a question, Mr. McGinley.
I agree with Harry. I mean, if Harry says it, I believe him.
Okay, Ms. Haug, you want to?
Yep. I read the letter of resignation, and it looks like Mr. Holter resigned so that he could be considered for the election board. And he may not have been aware that the election board would not consider him, he would not be eligible for that because there's a restriction against having served on a county board, authority board or commission before that, before being appointed. Did anybody reach out to him and ask him if he wanted to reconsider his resignation? Given that, I mean, that was his only reason for resigning, as far as I can see.
I'm not aware of anybody reaching out unless somebody has information that I don't have.
I'd make a motion to table this at this point in time.
Well, table or just remove?
Well, you can do either or.
Well, I would.
All I'm saying is, if we remove it, we don't vote on it, and then we could contact Mr. Holter to see what his wishes are. And depending on what his answer is, he'd either be back on the agenda or he would continue on with his service on the blighted property. So whatever.
I'll change my motion. I'll change my motion to remove it from the agenda at this point in time.
Second, Schnee.
Okay, Mr. Urban, second, Mr. Schnee. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
If I could, Mr. Chair.
Aye.
I'm sorry. Go ahead, Ms. Haas.
I see Mr. Holter's on the chat there, on one of the participants, perhaps.
I don't know if this would be the place, really.
Okay.
I'd rather give him a little time.
Take it off the agenda and have the conversation afterwards.
Okay.
We'll remove Mr. Urban, Mr. Schnee. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposition, any abstentions? None heard. Motion carries. Moving down to number 10. We have nominations and appointments to the Luzerne County Bureau of Elections, Board of Elections, that should be, and registration. We have a motion to open up nominations.
Some more, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Haas makes a motion. Do we have a second?
Second, Kendra.
Deal.
Ms. Radel? All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition, any abstentions?
Abstained.
Oh, Mr. Urban abstains. Thank you.
Abstained because I don't think the county's following the law.
Okay. The first one is a member who would be a Democrat, who would serve a term that would be ending at the end of this year, 12/31/21. Do we have nomination?
And Mr. McGinley, a point of order too, because I sent an email out prior to the meeting that three people may not be qualified because one actually works for Commonwealth Health, which is probably a contractor within the county, another one retired from Geisinger, which was probably a contractor from, you know, we probably have a contract with Geisinger, and an additional one that serves on the executive committee of the Luzerne County GOP, who's a voting member, which would make that person a member of, like, an official within the political body.
I can speak to that, Mr. McGinley. You know, Councilman Urban is correct. We do have contracts with Geisinger and Commonwealth Health. Most of those contracts are to provide services for clients, not directly to provide services for the county. A lot of it is passed through money from federal funding. I did not get an opportunity, because of the short turnaround, to look in every single contract with every single healthcare provider, specifically Commonwealth and Geisinger. I'm also aware, particularly with Geisinger, they have different legal entities. I don't know if this particular applicant works for the legal Geisinger entity. They have a lot of different corporate structure. Works for one that we have a contract with. Because of that, I erred on the side of inclusion, rather exclusion. But certainly, there's an argument to be made either side. If county wants to not, if the county council does not want to include these two applicants, I think you have the legal right to do that. I also think that you also would have the legal right to include them. As for the member of the executive committee, I'm going to read you a portion of a memo that was written for Councilman Griffith, and it was authored by retired Judge Joseph Cosgrove. Mr. Griffith asked for a review as to whether election officials, such as judges of election, minority or majority inspectors, are considered elected official according to the Homeworld Charter. I'm going to read to you a part of that memo, and I'll circulate it as well afterwards. Judge Cosgrove wrote that the Public Official and Employee Ethics Act provides a useful guide in addressing this inquiry, especially in light of Commonwealth Court's understanding of the interconnection between the Ethics Act and Election Code. Generally, the Ethics Act and the Election Code are primateria, and therefore, the language of each act should be considered together. The Ethics Act specifically states that a judge of elections, inspector of elections, or official of a political party, whether or not such individuals nominated or elected are not included in the definition of candidates for public office by vote of the electorate who are obliged to file statements of financial interest. This is the key paragraph. The Ethics Commission's regulations further state that, quote, "The term 'public official' does not include judges and inspectors of elections, notary publics, and political party officers." And the citation is 51 PA Code, Section 11.1. Based on this opinion, the individual who is part of the GOP Executive Committee is eligible to be considered.
Ramilda, quick question for you. The one line in the actual charter says, "Or serve or have served as an officer in a political party." It's not public official, it's not public officer. It's an officer in a political party. So a political party would be Republican or Democrat. Those are the only two political parties that we know of. An officer would be somebody of the executive committee within that political party. And she's currently serving as an officer in the political party because she is a voting member of that particular executive committee.
I believe this, the analysis, the analysis that I just read applies to this particular individual.
That's a difference of opinion.
Well, public.
I mean, we know what a political party is. Everybody knows that's Republican or Democrat. An officer within a political party is in a capacity of leadership that has a voting, a vote at the table. Okay? A vote at the table. They have a seat at the table, and they're able to effectuate the policy of that party within the county. And that's part of your executive committee. Democrats have an executive committee, and the Republicans have an executive committee. And those people that vote on those executive committees would be technically the officers in that political party. I mean, I'm a Republican State Committee member, but I don't have a seat at the GOP table within the county because our bylaws do not include state committee members as part of the executive committee or a voting member. So by definition, I'm not an officer in the political party. However, on the Democratic side, I think they're Democratic State Committee people that do have a seat at the table and various other positions within their districts. Those would be considered officers within the political party. I mean, this is about mincing words here again. And then as far as the other ones, where it says, "Be or have been employed or compensated by any individual or business serving as a contractor." If the person is being compensated by Geisinger or Commonwealth Health, they are, Geisinger by virtue of having a contract with the county or Commonwealth Health having a contract with the county, they are technically being compensated because they're employed by that contractor. It's pretty simple. I think I know how to read English. Maybe you don't, but I do.
Okay.
Mr. McGinley, could I ask a question about some applicants, please?
One second.
Okay.
Can. One second, though. Trying to maneuver something here.
Okay.
And then I'll be right with you, Mr. Griffith. Okay?
Sure.
Go ahead, Mr. Griffith. I'm sorry.
Okay. All right, that's all right. That's fine. There was a lot of work for the Office of Law to do in the last two days, obviously, because we got such a big reply, and kudos to the ABC Committee for what they did to try and get this thing together in such short notice. The question that I have, and I know Chris Perry addressed it, Councilman Perry addressed this later on in the meeting, when people said they were poll workers. And I know that's a disqualification because we know what happened with Mark Finkelstein from the last time we tried to appoint him, that he was a poll worker, was not able to sit on the board. So I just have some questions about some folks who were interviewed that said they were poll workers. And later on in the interview process, Mr. Perry clarified that. But earlier on, there were, Mr. Peter Wolman said that he was a poll worker. So is he disqualified, or was he a poll worker in the sense that he was handing out polling cards? So those kind of questions, if they're disqualified, and I understand what the Office of Law is saying, if we put them on and we find out there's an issue later, we can always take them off. I would rather err on the side of making sure that we're voting accordingly. And so Peter Wolman said he was a poll worker, so I wrote disqualified by his name. Michelle Pack said she was a poll worker, and it says in her resume that she worked the polls. So I put disqualified after her name. There's some other folks on, go ahead.
I thought, Mr. Griffith, I listened to Michelle Pack. I thought she said she passed out cards. She wasn't a candidate.
If I may, I did check with Budget and Finance if any checks were issued to Michelle Pack, and they were not. So she was not a poll worker. I did not check for Mr. Walderman.
And that's kind of what I did as well, Ramilda, because, I mean, obviously, when you're having the interviews, I was on New World, and I was keying in their names just to see if there was any checks issued to them. So I just, like I said, I just want to be clear that, I guess you probably did your due diligence on checking all of those, but I just wanted to make sure that I have my notes written down, and some of the folks that you have on the list are still on my list as disqualified. So, and I did check that, and there was no checks issued to them. So I guess we can rest assured, if we didn't pay them, then that would not disqualify them. Is that kind of correct?
Yes.
Okay, okay. So that was my.
I think they were just poll watchers, and I think maybe going forward, if it comes up, I think we need to. up, I think we need to, uh, uh, ask those questions specifically. You started to, but people had already, uh, been interviewed, uh, and, uh, you know, the ones that we're talking about right now.
Sure. And like I said, I do know that it was a kind of a, a hurry up and get it done type of thing. And I don't want to, I don't want to say anything discouraging against the ABC. I think they stepped right up and got it done. So, at the risk of, uh, you know, having, having a, a problem, I just wanted to clarify that. So, thank you so much.
Okay. Are we ready for nominations?
Yes.
Okay, we have the first one is a Democrat to serve a term that would be completed at the end of this year. Do we have a nomination?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Mr. McGinley, I nominate Kathy Roth.
Okay, do we have a second?
Vogue. Vogue, sorry, I second.
Okay. Ms. Saban and Mr. Vog, anybody else? Any other nominations?
Motion to close nominations, Kendra.
Okay, do we have a second for Ms. Radell?
Second, Sheila.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any in opposition? Any abstentions? Nominations are closed. Do we have a motion to appoint Ms. Roth by resolution? The Luzerne County Board of Elections and Registration as a Democrat for the term ending 12/31/21. Do we have a motion for a resolution?
So moved, Linda.
Ms. Hauck, do we have a second for Ms. Hauck?
Second, Perry.
Sheila.
Perry. Roll call, please.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Haug?
Yes.
Hauck?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Radell?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Abstain.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Ten yes, one abstention.
Very good. We're moving down to the first Republican, which would be a term ending 12/31/21. Do we have a motion to open nominations?
Present it.
Mr. Schnee, do we have a second for Mr. Schnee?
Second, Mr. Chair Harry.
Mr. Haas, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any in opposition? Any abstentions? We're now open for nominations.
Present the name of Richard Nardone.
Mr. Nardone is by Mr. Schnee. Do we have a second for Mr. Schnee? Mr. Perry? Other nominations?
Yes. I have a nomination for Ms., uh, Candace Chilik.
Is that how you pronounce her name? I wasn't sure.
Yeah, I think it's Chilik.
Okay. You're probably doing better than I would on that one, Mr. Griffith. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second.
Second, Mr. Chair Harry.
Mr. Haas? Any other nominations?
Present the name of Missy Thomas.
Uh, Missy Thomas, okay. Mr. Schnee? Who was second on that?
Kendra.
Uh, Ms. Radell? Okay. Anyone else?
Like to move the name, uh, Alyssa Fassaro, please.
Who made that nomination?
Harry.
Mr. Haas, do we have a second for Mr. Haas?
I'll second that.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Any other nominations? Do we have a motion to close nominations?
Move to close.
Mr. Griffith makes a mo- motion, Ms. Saban, second?
Yes.
All in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Any abstentions? None heard. Nominations are not closed. We have three, uh, people who have been nominated. Uh, Ms. Chilik, I, Mr. Nardone, and Mr. Thomas. And, excuse me, the fourth one, Ms. Fassaro, right? Mr. Nardone, Ms. Chilik, Mr. Ms. Thomas, Mrs. Fassaro, correct? Okay, we're gonna, you would, um, we're going to go around and indicate the person that you support. The first person who gets six votes would be the, the nominee. Roll call.
Mr. Haug?
Ms. Chilik and Ms. Fassaro.
No, you're more, you're just doing one, Mr. Haas. We're only doing the term that ends 12/31/21. Then we're gonna do 12/31/23.
Sorry about that, Mr. Chair. Ms. Ms. Chilik, please.
Ms. Chilik?
Ms. Hauck?
Ms. Chilik.
Ms. McDermott?
Ms. Thomas.
Mr. Perry?
Mr. Nardone.
Ms. Radell?
Mr. Nardone.
Ms. Sedman?
Mr. Nardone.
Mr. Schnee?
Mr. Nardone.
Mr. Urban?
I'm abstaining from the process. I don't believe the county's following the law.
Mr. Vog?
Mr. Nardone.
Mr. Griffith?
Ms. Chilik.
Mr. McGinley?
Mr. Nardone.
Six for Nardone, three for Chilik, one for Thomas, one abstention.
Okay. Mr. Nardone would be the nominee. Do we have a motion to appoint Mr. Nardone by resolution as a Republican to the Luzerne County Board of Elections for the term ending 12/31/21?
So moved, Sheila.
Ms. Saban made the motion. Do we have a second? Second for Ms. Saban. Mr. Perry? Roll call, please.
Ms. Hauck?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Radell?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Abstain, same reasons.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Haug?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Ten yes with one abstention.
Very good. We're moving down to the third, uh, member, which term would end 12/31/23. Do we have a motion to open nominations?
All moved, Walter.
Mr. Griffith, do we have a second for Mr. Griffith?
Second, Kendra.
Ms. Radell, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any in opposition? Any abstentions?
Abstain.
Nominations are now open.
Motion to nominate Missy Thomas.
Second, Schnee.
Ms. Radell and Mr. Schnee, do we have a, any other nominations?
Yes.
Motion, Ms. Fassaro.
Mr. Haas, do we have a second?
Yep. Second, Walter.
Mr. Griffith, okay. Any other nominations? Do we have a motion to close nominations?
So moved, Sheila.
Ms. Saban, do we have a second?
Second, Kendra.
Second, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Any in opposition? Any abstentions?
Abstain.
Okay, okay. Motion carries. So, now we have two nominees. Ms. Thomas and Ms. Fassaro. Go around and you'll indicate which of the two candidates you support. Ms. Lawrence?
Ms. McDermott?
Ms. Thomas.
Mr. Perry?
Missy Thomas.
Ms. Radell?
Ms. Thomas.
Ms. Sedman?
Missy Thomas.
Mr. Schnee?
Ms. Thomas.
Mr. Urban?
Abstaining from the process.
Mr. Vog?
Ms. Thomas.
Mr. Griffith?
Uh, Alyssa Fassaro.
Mr. Haug?
Ms. Fassaro.
Ms. Hauck?
Fassaro.
Mr. McGinley?
Ms. Thomas?
Seven for Thomas, three for Fassaro with one abstention.
Thank you. We have a motion now to appoint Ms. Thomas by resolution to the Luzerne County Board of Elections and Registration.
So moved, Chris.
Ms. Perry, Mr. Perry, do we have a second for Mr. Perry?
Second, Leeann.
Ms. McDermott? Roll call, please.
Ms. Radell, excuse me, Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Radell?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Abstain.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Haug?
Yes.
Ms. Hauck?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Ten yes with one abstention.
Thank you. Now, we're going to go to two items that we added to the agenda. The first item you would find on your work, uh, session, agenda packet, and it is resolution by Luzerne County Council. The title is a little resolution, Luzerne County Council, to oppose the implementation of Act 88 of 2012 P3 program regarding the tolling of a, of bridge on Pennsylvania interstates, especially Luzerne County. Again, the information is found in your packet for your work session.
Present it, Schnee.
Do we have a motion? Who's that? Mr. Schnee? Okay. Do we have a second for Mr. Schnee?
Second, Kendra.
Ms. Radell? On the question.
Just on the question, Mr. Chair, if I may?
Go ahead, Mr. Haas.
So, again, I mean, it's, it's pretty self-explanatory. If, if you all read the, uh, resolution there to oppose tolling, it's grossly unpopular. Residents fought against this to toll interstate highways, uh, several years ago. And, uh, this is essentially the same thing by a different name. And, um, you know, we're, the, the legis, the, uh, yeah, the Legislative Committee took some time at last meeting. We cobbled together a draft letter for your approval and on it just gives the reasons, uh, such things as the, the, um, massive gas tax that went through about eight years ago. We have the second highest in the nation. Uh, we're already paying for, uh, infrastructure in Pennsylvania, and this is dup- duplicative. Uh, if we look at other things, the residents oppose this. Um, it unfairly impacts residents, especially in South County, who you use I-80 as a, a major east-west thoroughfare. Um, it's gonna impinge on businesses that are, um, using trucks up here in the, in the Northeast. We know we've just approved some Koz's or Lerdas in past years and just very counterproductive. So, we'd be giving a tax abatement for businesses that turn around and taxing them and sending the money down to Harrisburg through PennDOT. And, uh, we all know, we all know how well the turnpike's running and how great the increases are every year that we don't know about because we use Easy Pass and you just pay them and you smile on your way. So, um, nobody's smiling on this one. Nobody is. And, uh, I just ask the, the Council's blessing to send this forward. And, um, once, um, if, if we're fortunate to approve this, I'd like to talk about later about, um, how we disseminated too, if I may, Mr. Chair. But, um, that's my pitch. I'd be happy to discuss more.
Okay.
Harry, Bobby Schnee, great job. I, I don't think, uh, anybody on Council is voting for tolling bridges. But, great job by the Legislative Committee and totally agree with you a hundred percent.
Thanks for the support, Bob.
Other people? I have one, uh, I have, uh, an issue in paragraph six and in the, in the resolution, Mr. Haas.
Sure.
You cite a lot of different, um, groups that are within our community or in, within our Luzerne County community. Uh, I don't know if that's a proper thing to, to include them in our resolution. I believe the resolution is on behalf of Luzerne County and Luzerne County Council. Each of those groups certainly can, uh, provide their own opinion and their own, um, statement to the parties involved, which I would encourage them to do, uh, because I think if they receive more than one, uh, communication, it does have, uh, an effect on, uh, their decision-making. So, uh, I would like to have that removed because I don't think it's appropriate to include those without having their, uh, permission or, you know, acknowledgement from those groups. Other than that, I think, uh, that, you know, you put it in there what you want to say, and I think everybody probably is going to agree with, uh, the vast majority of that statement, those statements.
Well, I, I appreciate it, Mr. Chair, if I may. You know, I, I, I appreciate that. I think if it gets us to a unanimous vote, I, I think I'd certainly be all for it. And the committee, we, we discussed that. Actually, we wanted to make sure that they were true statements and they were all publicly made statements that we confirmed. So, but, um, like I said, in the, just to get us a two unanimous vote, I'd, I'd be happy to, to entertain that motion, to strike that out of the document.
Well, I'll, I'll make that amendment if, if that's, and then if, uh, we get a second, we'll vote on that and then we can vote on the resolution. Do we have a second to, uh, take that paragraph out of the resolution? Ms. Saban?
Second, yes.
Roll call on the amendment.
Ms. Radell?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Mr. Griffith?
No.
Mr. Haug?
Yes.
Ms. Hauck?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry? Mr. Perry?
So I'm mute.
Mr. Perry, are you muted?
Yes. Sorry.
No problem.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes. Thank you.
Ten yes with one no.
Um, Mr. Haas, I have one other suggestion for you.
Oh, go ahead.
Uh, you know, we have a signature page, uh, but I would suggest that we add a signature page that would include all the council members' signatures so it can show the positive support.
Yeah, I, I thought we included that, so am I oversight and, um,
Well, no big deal. We would just add that if that's permissible, if everybody's, uh, fine with that.
Yeah, and I think, um, I, I think that our draft was talking about you, the word, using the word unanimous and putting that there just to, to drive home the point to all the people we want to reach.
Where would we, where do you want to put that word in?
Depending on approval, of course.
Yeah, where, where, where would you want to put that word in, Mr. Haas?
And adopt it unanimously, right after unanimously.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
It wasn't adopted unanimously, then we had one no.
Oh.
No one, this is the-
That was no on-
No, that was on the amendment, I'm sorry.
We're now going to vote on the resolution. That may be a different, uh, vote, hopefully.
Now, does that page, does that require a vote, Mr. Chair? Do we have to vote on,
What?
On the signature page?
Uh, I don't think we'd have to vote, but I would like to, you know, acknowledge that so people know what we're, what would be included in. You know, we do have, uh, act, some of the signatures, so we could, uh, put that together pretty easily, I believe.
Okay.
Do not have electronic-
There is some positive power to that, if that's the proper terminology.
Sure.
Anyone else?
I, I have one, just in, in edit, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
I must have looked at, and I'm going back to read it. In the, I think at the very last whereas, you see the semicolon that says and. I think we could strike the and and it should say at the beginning in caps, "Now therefore be it resolved." Isn't that the, the, the form that we use? Or, I think that's a question, Ms. Lawrence.
So I can find it, please?
Sure. So, you're, you're, uh, two, you're, you're two- So you're, you're two, you're, you're two sections up from the bottom.
Okay.
Says be resolved that. I think immediately before that, the very last whereas, the very tail end there, get rid of the "and", strike the "and", and it says, it should say then, "Now therefore be it resolved."
Okay, now therefore.
Yes, that's correct.
Just House speaking.
Well, let's go, we had a motion to, for the amendment, for the motion from my Mr. Schnee, Ms. Radel. Would your motion, Mr. Schnee, Ms. Radel, include those two edits that Mr. Haas just spoke about?
Yes.
Okay, we're fine with that? We're going to vote on the resolution with two edits. Roll call, please.
The amendment has the two edits and the removal of paragraph six.
We already removed paragraph six.
I know, but we're voting on the resolution with the two edits and the removal of six.
That's correct.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Voe?
Yes.
Mr. Griffiths?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Ms. Dermott?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Radel?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Very good. Okay, Mr. Haas, was great with that?
Yeah, yeah, well, I'm great with that. Thank you, everybody. Thanks for the support and for the committee members and for management. Thanks, Manager Pedry, for bringing us some data too, and staff, we really appreciate you. I just thought, Mr. Chair, to get the word out, if we could send, you know, again, looking at how we could get council to sign, you know, sign the real signature there for like it's most bang for the buck. If we could send paper copies, I think most urgently, to the P3 board members, because they're the ones that approved this last November. And I think that's, that's the first stopgap. If we can stop it there, I think the problem's solved. If we can get them to stop. And then if we could send a paper copy, if it doesn't work out, though, I think concurrently, I think we should nonetheless, send a paper copy to the governor, our NEPA delegation, the senators and the representatives, so you're looking at 10 members. And then the, the General Assembly and the Senate leadership, which would only be a handful of people.
How about, Mr. Haas, could you identify those parties in an email? So I have them all correct, and then we'll pass it by everybody so that everybody knows who's getting copies. But I don't see any issue. I think everybody is very solid agreement on this. Is that all right?
Yeah. Yeah, I can certainly do it, but just so everybody knows when it comes, it's less work than the paper copies. And perhaps email copies, just send forwards to all the C cap membership, the different counties, because I know this is not popular almost anywhere in the state. I think to galvanize the other commissioners and other counties and council members, that'd be helpful. And then also every, every member in the General Assembly. I mean, it's a simple email forward. There's probably a listserv somewhere that's, somebody's sitting on somewhere, so perhaps we can do that. But I'll get that together.
Yeah, we appreciate that.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks, everybody.
All right, we're now down to the second item that we added, which was the resolution regards to the district attorney. And Ms. Howe has been
Right.
Looking at the resolution that we had originally and has done some editing. Was that the correct, Ms. Howe?
Yes, I'm sorry, my internet just started to cut out, of course. But, yeah, so I did send a revised resolution out to everyone's email. Did everybody get a copy of that?
I think so, and I think Ms. Lawrence also shared it with everybody.
And it's on the website.
And it's on the website, too, also.
Revision, okay. So just like for the people at home, what it says is, whereas elected district attorney Stephanie Salavantis has declared her intention to seek the elective public office as judge, section 304 of the charter provides that no district attorney shall file a petition for nomination or election or becomes a candidate for public office other than the one he or she holds at the time, unless he or she first resigns from office. Whereas Stephanie Salavantis has filed petitions for nomination to the elective public office of judge. And the charter provides that whenever facts or circumstances result in a vacancy, the county council at its next regularly scheduled or special meeting shall declare the office vacant. Now therefore be it resolved, Luzerne County Council declares the elected position of Luzerne County District Attorney vacant due to the inability of Stephanie Salavantis to serve in that position, having filed nominating petitions for an elective public office. That's the totality of the resolution.
Yep, very good.
And I, I move that.
Mr. Chair.
That's my move.
Mr. Schnee, go ahead.
I would like to, I'd like to make an amendment to that.
Okay, let's first see if we get a motion and a second, and then we'll talk about amendment.
Okay, thank you.
No problem. Do we have a motion for a resolution that was just identified by Ms. Howe?
I move.
There you go. Do we have a second for Ms. Howe?
Yes, Sheila.
Ms. Saban? Okay, now we're on to question. Mr. Schnee, you want to make an amendment, please?
I'm making an amendment that the Court of Common Plea judges of Luzerne County will make this selection through advertising and interview process. I also have case, there's case law out there, and there's state law out there that justifies this amendment. And where it reads, whereas Title 16 PS 1404, A Vacancies in the Office of District Attorney States if any vacancy occurs, the judges of the common, Court of Common Plea shall supply such vacancy by the appointment of a competent person to fill the office for the duration of that unexpired term. Where inasmuch any selection of Luzerne County Home Rule Charter conflicts with Pennsylvania state law, Pennsylvania state law takes precedence.
Mr. Schnee?
That's in fact, right, that's state law.
Okay.
And there's case law out there that supports the amendment.
Mr. Schnee, I wrote down, you want the amendment through the Court of Common Plea of Luzerne County? Let's make this election through advertising and public interviews? That's correct.
Through the interview process.
Interview process?
Yep.
Okay.
So would that be placed after the now therefore we declare the vacancy? And then add, and we request that, is that where it would go? And request that the court? And continue with that amendment? Okay, respectfully, I would put respectfully request.
Okay.
Okay.
Let's
Okay, respectfully request it.
Okay, one, one thing at a time, though. We have a motion for the amendment by Mr. Schnee. Do we have a second for that amendment?
Second, Sheila.
Ms. Saban?
On the question.
On the question. Go ahead, Mr. Griffiths.
On the question, can we get an opinion from the Office of Law if we have the ability to violate the charter by changing a resolution? By resolution, can we violate the charter by resolution?
I think we could get a, a opinion from the Office of Law, Mr. Dulica or Ms. Crocomo, whoever happens to be available now.
The amendment is, Vito, are you on?
Yeah, no, go ahead.
Oh, I, the amendment is not consistent with the charter. What other council as a whole wants to delegate their authority is a decision that county council needs to make as a whole body. So there's nothing in the charter that says that you can't delegate that authority, but the amendment would, is not inconsistent, the amendment is inconsistent with the terms of the charter.
So we, so to be clear, we could violate the charter by resolution, as long as the majority, as long as the majority votes accordingly?
Well, you have, you know, you, you, individuals and groups have the ability to waive rights and responsibility and authorities that they might have. And I, I believe council has the right to do that. But it is inconsistent with, specifically inconsistent with the terms of the charter.
Okay, so if we decide, if we have the majority after the next election, because elections have consequences, if we decide as a board or as a council that we want to violate the charter and put elected officials on the, on the Board of Elections, could we do that?
That's a different circumstance. I do want to add, I do want to add, though, that I don't believe council has the authority to tell the Court of Common Plea what they shouldn't and shouldn't do.
I agree.
You know, the Court of Common Plea is an independent and separate entity, and county council has no authority over them to, to, to force them to any procedure. It's up to the Court of Common Plea.
So for us to make a resolution and put an amendment in here to tell the Court of Common Plea to do something is not a valid amendment?
Well, I'm not sure.
No, I'm, you're going to request that we press.
The, the Court of Common Plea does not have to abide by anything that the council requests or asks them to do. They're a separate entity.
Okay, I'm just, I'm just concerned about the ability for us to set a precedent here where we can violate the charter by resolution.
Well, you will be setting a precedent.
I'm, Mr. McGinley, as the person who made the motion for this, I would just like to say, I'm going to vote against the amendment just because I think the important thing is to acknowledge that there's a vacancy. And then I think I would appreciate it if there could be some discussion with the courts about the correct way to do, to fill the vacancy. But I think the more important thing is to acknowledge the vacancy and who will be acting district attorney as of the effectiveness of this resolution. And that, I think, is the critical piece tonight.
Yep, I agree.
Absolutely.
Okay, yeah, Mr. Chair, if I could, I think, if I could. I think, I think one is exactly, all right, we got to keep our eyes on the prize. I'm looking here at the, at the charter, and it says here, section 305, it says temporary absence in capacity of the DA's office shall each designate an employee of his or her office who shall exercise the powers and duties of the office holder during his or her temporary absence or inability to serve. So it's just plain as day right there. And I, I don't know, if I can ask you, Bob, why, why the rush to give away council's powers to punt and give it to the courts? Like, you did research to do that?
Harry, the reason for, no, the reason for the amendment is who more than them to choose who they appear in front of day in and day out? That they see these people practicing.
What?
Let Mr. Schnee finish, and then Mr. Haas can reply.
Come on, it's the head prosecutor.
It's what? Right, it's, the magnitude of this job should be selected by people on Luzerne County Council. It should be selected by people that they appear for in front of the judges every day, day in and day out.
We're not selecting. It says that the deputy would take over. We don't have any part of it. You declare the vacancy, charter's all taken care of, take the politics out of it.
Harry.
There's no weird stuff.
Harry, that's if somebody gets sick, not if they run for office. You're misinterpreting that document you read.
Three, zero, five. Check it out. Seriously.
Read it, Harry, read it.
We make your amendment.
Okay.
Read it.
All right. Anyone else? We're talking about the amendment that's been submitted by Mr. Schnee, second by Ms. Saban.
Yeah, Mr. McGinley?
Yes. And Mr. Urban, go ahead.
I just want to, I find it very amazing that everybody's citing state law now that taking precedent over the charter and certain charter provisions taking precedent over state law. I mean, you know, basically, it gets back to Title 53, Section 2962, A, C, and E. Basically, anything that's a uniform state law shall supersede the charter, no matter what we write in the charter. You know, we could put in murder is legal in our charter, but that doesn't make it legal in Luzerne County. Okay, it doesn't make it legal in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. We can go and try to put a sales tax in, in place of a real estate tax, but we can't legally do it. I mean, we could say it, but it's still not legal because the legislative body and the governor haven't signed off on that bill. So quite honestly, our charter has some deficiencies in it, and I want people to recognize that. And that was the whole premise of even last week. You guys violated it tonight. I mean, by putting a board member on there that doesn't belong there because she actually works for a contractor within the county, is employed by a contractor. It's all plain English. You know, it's plain English. Some of us can read plain English and interpret plain English. You don't have to be an attorney with 30 years of experience and seven years of law school to read the simplistic, you know, certain sentences in the charter. And so, you know, it's all selective enforcement on what you want to do and how you want to do it. Quite honestly, you know, this is what I see. I mean, 2962 is clear under Title 53. I understand the case law up in Lackawanna County. It does state that it's kind of the same premise. We, if we have a DA resign, Court of Common Plea gets to choose that pick. That's in the case law, that's in the state law. You know, our charter says one thing, everybody wants to maybe tee it up for a court challenge, but our charter's wrong in that instance. We have to realize that. You know, and that's the conundrum in the Pandora's Box that we face here tonight. It's what we faced last week. You know, I, I like the fact that the attorney, you know, as Crocomo just stated, that the courts can do whatever they want. They're their own body. Well, the Board of Elections is their own body, too, but you usurped their power last week by removing three people. One person that you didn't even appoint. You, as a governing body, didn't appoint that particular person, but they're in their own form, and you squashed them, basically squashed them. You know, so quite honestly, the hypocrisy in this county is so great that maybe some of this stuff needs to go to Commonwealth Court to get some clarity. You know, that's why we pay attorneys in this county, but nobody wants to do the work. It's, it's too hard to fix the problem. It actually wastes more energy and time here arguing about the point than just simply fixing the problems in front of us that we recognize.
Okay, anyone else?
Just want to state for the record that the courts are a separate, independent branch of government.
Correct. And so are every ABC out there.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, we're voting on the amendment. The amendment would say respectfully request the Court of Common Plea of Luzerne County to make this election through advertising and interview process.
Mr. McGinley, oh, Mr. McGinley, I want to withdraw my second to Bob's motion to the amendment. I agree with Linda on this.
Thank you.
Okay, do we have a second for Mr. Schnee?
They're going to pull it out, hold the car for that one.
No second? No amendment? Okay, we have a motion.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
I need, I would like to make an amendment that's germane to the resolution, if I could, please. I didn't know we were doing this, or I would, I didn't know Linda was going to rewrite this ordinance or resolution, or I would have added to it, I didn't realize it was out there, I would have added the writing in there. I think we also need to add in the section 305 that Mr. Haas brought up. It says, whereas section 305 of the charter provides for temporary absence and states the district attorney designate an employee to exercise the powers and duties of the office holder, county council hereby appoints the district attorney's designee Sam Sangwaducci, district attorney. Sangwaducci, yes, I'm sorry, thank you.
Correct.
Correct, that we should put that in the resolution so that he has authorization, according to our charter, to perform the duties of the DA once we declare that position vacant. Based on the charter, I think we need to put that in that resolution. That the charter allows for us, Assistant District Attorney Sangwaducci to do the duties of the district attorney.
Okay, we have a motion for amendment by Okay, we have a motion for amendment by Mr. Griffith. Do we have a second for Mr. Griffith?
I'll second that, it's Linda. Just to be clear, we would put that in right before the now therefore, and say, whereas the section of the charter provides for, you know, the assumption of the duties. And then in the now therefore section, add at the, after having filed nominating petitions for an elective public office, and designate Samuel Sangwaducci as the acting district attorney. Is that correct?
Yes, and, and the only other thing I think you might want to think about adding is the section eleven oh five F and G of our charter that says why that person is put there. So I, I, again, I don't have that written. You don't think that's necessary? Okay.
Well, it's in the charter, so I don't, yeah, I agree. But, so we have amendment by Mr. Griffith, we have a second by Ms. Howe. On the, on that amendment, questions?
I have one, Mr. Chair, just a comment.
Go ahead.
You know, I, I read three oh five there, and sure enough, if there, if there were no designee there, then it says council has to appoint somebody. So I think what Walter and Linda just put forth there is entirely appropriate. I, I didn't see that portion of it, so, well, well done, colleagues.
Uh, anyone else?
Mr. McGinley?
Yes, Mr. Snee.
Yes, so this is just to declare the vacancy and put Sam where he's going, and that's it, correct?
Yes.
I believe that's what the.
Hire down who will make the selection, the permanent selection for the next two and a half years.
Yeah, that doesn't have, that's not part of this, at this point, Mr. Snee. I don't believe.
That's what I'm just trying to clarify.
Yeah, I, I think you're correct with that clarification. Uh, again, Ms. Crocamo and Mr. Dulica, going back several years ago, when we had a vacancy with the Controller's Office. The council declared the vacancy, but we did not appoint or designate someone to handle that office at that time. I believe at that time, the designation was made through the letter that had been submitted by the former controller, where that person that he had identified to take over the, the office operation during that period of time. Before the permit person was placed in office. Do we have the authority or the responsibility, whatever the proper terminology would be, to appoint or designate someone?
Actually, Ramilda, you're going to be on this. I have, I have pending matters with the district attorney. I don't want to.
Right, I mean, the, there is a clause in the charter that allows council to do that, you know. Its effectiveness, we'll find out as, as this continues. I do want to say, though, you're at a point now making the very significant substantive amendments to the resolution that was originally posted. And I recommend that you open it up to public comment.
Okay.
Question?
Council member comment before we do that.
Question?
Go ahead.
Ramilda, did you have the discussion that you were going to?
Uh, yes, but if we're going to get into that specifically, I'm going to ask that we go into executive session.
Okay.
Okay, should we open it up for public comment?
I think we should go into executive session, just so I could hear the response of Ramilda.
You want to do that first?
Yes, I'll second that.
Okay, Jared?
Can we vote on that, please?
Vote on what?
Whether we go to executive session?
Uh, I don't think that's necessary to vote on, but.
Do we, do we do that? Do we vote on it?
No, the usual executive session is just scheduled, and we never vote on executive session.
Okay, all right, I just want to make sure we're okay.
Yeah, I, I believe we're okay.
Well, I think we do when we're in the middle of a meeting and we adjourn to an executive session.
Oh, I, I, well, it doesn't matter to me. I don't care one way or the other. I just think that there is a question that seems to be of an issue that needs to have an executive session. I don't think we should entertain the question in a public session without hearing that personally, but.
Okay, I move that we move, go into executive session.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Any in opposition? Any abstentions?
No, no, Harry Haas.
Mr. Haas?
Walter Griffith.
Mr. Griffith, two negatives? Uh, Jared?
I don't believe this is executive session material, that's why I voted no.
Well, that's fine. Jared?
Sending it out now.
You're sending it out now? Okay, in your email, you should be getting an invitation for the executive session?
Make sure everyone mutes on this before they go to executive session.
Okay.
Okay.
Jared, do we have to leave this meeting, or can we come back to this meeting after?
Uh, you can come back as long as you exit fully and mute your phone. If, you'll have to exit your phone or have Sharon mute in her office. I'm going to mute the whole bridge here in a second.
Okay.
So we have to log off, right?
You can stay on it, and then you can just go to the other meeting. It'll put you on hold in here, and then you can come right back in.
Okay.
You're going to have to explain that one more time, Jared.
If you go to your calendar and you open the executive session, that should have just been sent out unless it didn't send yet.
Yeah, I think, I think I got the, uh, your invitation, yes.
And if you go to your calendar and join that meeting, it'll put you on hold in here.
Okay, so join the meeting?